Get ready, and we will commence the Thursday, March 5th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Call to order, please, and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Bongio?
Present.
Commissioner Levy?
Present.
Commissioner McGaver?
Here.
Thank you.
And I'll ask if there's any adjustments to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda, but I do want to call your attention to revised action summary for the Thursday, February 20th, 2020, meeting that has some highlighted modifications to it. There is supplemental information for item E4 and item E6.
Thank you.
I actually have a question. Since the agenda that I'm looking at still shows item number three on the consent agenda as Old Goat Farms, is that on our agenda but requesting a continuance?
That is correct. The action on that will be to continue it to a date uncertain.
Okay, because I just didn't see that spelled out on the agenda itself.
I thought that's the recommendation.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's not.
I just didn't see it one way or the other, but Suzanne had indicated, had answered my question earlier today about that, so.
Yeah, given the fact that there may be some confusion on that, on the paper agenda anyway, could I ask that you just simply remove that from consent and make a motion and do that separately?
Okay.
So that there is no confusion on that?
Great, yeah, just because it otherwise could be ambiguous.
Sounds good. We'll do that when we get to it. Right now, we're going to open public comment. This is for any item that is not on the agenda. So if anybody would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, this is your chance.
Good evening. Thomas Mulder, CEO, Humboldt-Redwood Healing. Came up here, want to talk later on the agenda, but I just bring this forward. I keep talking to the Board of Supervisors and asking them to amend ordinance 2.0, so I pray that their ad hoc committee will recommend some amendments to ordinance 2.0 and then bring it before you to have the hearings and then bring it to the Board of Supervisors. I see spring ahead of us. I see a lot of people that are using their own personal use, and I feel that we need to amend ordinance 2.0 to be 200 square feet for under an acre and 500 square feet for over an acre for personal use. I think lots of people have the need for that. I don't think it would be detrimental to the environment as long as they aren't sucking straight out of a waterway. And I think we could use some of the tax dollars or abatement dollars to even, you know, work with satellites to show that it's clearly, you know, 200 square feet or 500 square feet. Just something I think that would be good for our community, and that's something. Another thing I want to bring to your attention, I've brought it to the Board of Supervisors and now I'm here again. As you're approving these different projects, I want you to be mindful when it comes to the road use and generator noise, that there are some outstanding, or there's some commercial activities within the county that are already approved that are not held to those same standards that you're asking of cannabis farmers. I actually, for one, am on the same road as another commercial activity, non-cannabis related, that does not have the same road standards or fire standards. They have petroleum diesel propane tanks on their site, and it's just something to be mindful about because when you have what I believe is an unfair business advantage to one commercial entity over another, when it comes to fire safety and environmental safety, they also have generators that are allowed to be, oh, 75 decibels at the property line within a potential sensitive habitat zone. So something to think about, maybe making a retroactive cellphone tower ordinance, something instead of principally permitted on TPZ. If you're going to go through all these mitigation efforts and to try to protect the environment on cannabis activities on TPZ lands, maybe let's do those for other commercial activities on TPZ lands that are in the same potentially sensitive habitats. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in public comment? Anyone? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move to the consent agenda. First, just so that everybody knows, I had a talk with the director before the meeting, and we are going to allow extra time for the applicants on the projects to speak. I'd like them to come at the after they've heard the public speak, so they can maybe answer questions that were brought up, but we're going to allow extra time, then the three minutes for the applicant. You can see there's a lot of people here, so there's probably a lot of questions. So it was something that the director brought up, and it looks like we might bring something back to the commission to have that as a permanent situation. So, but that was something that was brought up for tonight, so we're going to allow some extra time for the applicant. But if the applicant would come up at the end, that would be the best. So we're now going to move to the consent agenda, and I will go through it, and then we'll come back and take care of the housekeeping that we had to do because of the one that's being continued. So let's get out of the way the review and approval of the minutes, of the last two minute meetings.
Excuse me, do you mean you just want to see if we want to pull it or leave it?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we could get, we could take care of the action summaries first, and then we could go on to the consent. That's what I was thinking.
Those are actually both on consent.
So you want to do it all as one? Okay, that's fine with me. I just thought we'd get it out of the way. So we'll leave those on consent unless anybody wants to have those polled to have discussion. Anyone? Nope. And as we know, Old Goat Farms LLC conditional use permit is going to be polled, so we'll have a separate vote on that. Number four, Humboldt Emerald Triangle LLC conditional use permit. Is anybody here to speak on that? Not at this time. If you want it polled, we'll pull it from the consent. Thank you very much. So number four will be polled. Number five, Born and Raised LLC conditional use permit. Anybody here to speak on that matter?
Yes.
So it will be polled. Let's see, that leaves number, that was it on the consent, so did I miss?
No.
Wait, no, I'm sorry, there's six.
Six.
Yeah, seven. So. Okay, so is anybody else here to speak on number five, then?
Which is born and raised.
Which is born and raised LLC conditional use permit. Anybody on the commission?
No.
So we'll leave that on consent. Thank you for speaking up. So number six, Rocky Costa conditional use permit is, okay, that'll be polled. And number seven, Camino LLC conditional use permit. Anyone here to speak on that? Any commissioners? So that will stay on consent.
Ready for a motion?
Sure, go ahead.
I will move that we approve items number one, two, five, and seven from our consent agenda.
All second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All abstain from items one and two.
All right, so motion carries with the abstentions. Okay, so now we'll go back and we will take care of Old Goat Farms LLC conditional use permit. And do I have a motion to move that to a date?
Sure, I'll move that we continue item three, Old Goat Farms LLC conditional use permit, to a date uncertain.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So with that, we will move on to the polled items. So we will take, the first item will be Humboldt Emerald Triangle LLC conditional use permit and development permit. Give staff a second to get set up.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Portia Salsedo, the assigned planner for this project. This application is for a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit for Humboldt Emerald Triangle LLC. This is the first commercial cannabis cultivation project being brought forward under the Coastal Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, the CCC LUO. The proposed project is located on Table Bluff within existing greenhouses and within the Eel River area plan with a land use designation of agricultural exclusive grazing plan and present zoning designation of agricultural exclusive. This is a street view of the entrance looking both east and west. This project is undergoing a change of use from a previously permitted commercial flower farm to a commercial cannabis cultivation operation. The cannabis cultivation has been in operation since 2015, and no changes are proposed as part of this permit. The conditional use permit and coastal development permit is for 28,656 square feet of existing mix light and 9,800 square feet of existing outdoor, as well as an ancillary propagation space consisting of 4,140 square feet. Here's the proposed site plan. The yellow rectangle shows the location of the mix light cultivation and within the existing greenhouses. The green rectangle represents the location of the outdoor cultivation within existing greenhouses, and the purple rectangles represent the propagation space. And the applicant anticipates four to five cycles per year, cultivation cycles. This is a picture of one of the glass greenhouses for the mix light. There has been some concern from neighbors regarding light pollution, and the applicant has equipped the greenhouse with automatic blackout tarps to comply with International Dark Sky Standards. The water is sourced from a permitted well, and previous water storage was a 6,000 gallon water tank, and irrigation method would be drip and hand watering, and the previous projected annual water use was over 1 million gallons. The well is located on the project parcel indicated here with a blue droplet. The county received several letters from surrounding property owners regarding the well and the potential for negative impacts to the water availability in the vicinity. The project has been conditioned to have the groundwater inspected annually to elevate drawdown and the potential for the well to go dry. As part of the CCC LUO performance standards for wells on small parcels or 40 acres and smaller, wells located within 400 feet of a property line shall be subject to groundwater testing to determine connectivity of the source supply well for a minimum of eight hours by a qualified professional. The well being utilized for this project met those criteria and for well testing to be conducted. Here you can see the test well on the project parcel up on the top, and the monitor well is down in the southwest, down here, on a southern parcel from the project parcel. The applicant hired Watson Well Service to complete this testing January 20th of this year. The results of the test suggested there were, there was a lack of static change in pressure level of the monitor well, and it appeared that the water bearing zone had not been overdrafted. After the January 20th testing, the applicant opted to address the concerns of the neighbors regarding the water use and storage. 200,000 gallons of additional water storage is now being proposed in the area specified on the map here, those white circles. The applicant was able to reduce the estimated water usage demand by 66% to 300,039,600 gallons per year, which was down from the over 1 million gallons per year proposed. The power source will be PG&E. The processing is proposed to be a third-party processing facility. There's up to five full-time employees and three part-time. Hours of operation are 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days per week. So the county has received concerns from the community regarding security, including armed robbery, and this cannabis cultivation are a operation being a target, the facility to, has security with a locked gate with a key code access and perimeter fencing, and has an occupied residence on site. The neighbors have also expressed concern regarding the affluent from the cultivation operation. The project is fully contained within the greenhouses, and the runoff from the cultivation activities is not, it's not anticipated to happen. It's a recommendation of staff that the planning commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15301. Existing facilities of the CEQA guidelines make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and coastal development permit. Adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit and coastal development permit subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions, as well as the applicants are here, and I think maybe the well drilling company.
And if I go through the chair, just want to clarify, the water storage that's being proposed there is not something that would necessarily be developed. We've added a recommended condition of approval, and the applicant is willing to comply with this, that they would actually do testing to determine the connectivity of the nearest well to the, to the subject well, and if it is found to be connected, then they would develop this water storage. So that's kind of a requirement that would happen if that further testing is shown to affect the neighboring.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions?
I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So you're talking about the neighbor's well, if there was any connection with further testing, and that they would then look to develop the water storage?
That's correct, yes.
If I can follow up on that, because I think that's, that's the most salient concern that emerged from the public comment that I have reviewed. So can you state exactly what that testing for connectivity to neighboring wells would consist of? Would it consist, I mean, in as much detail as you can provide? What are we requiring exactly?
Sure. It would basically be something really similar to the test that they've already done, which is provided in, I think it's attachment four of the staff report. So somebody would go out, a well expert, and pump the subject well for a minimum of eight hours, and then would also be testing the level of the water in the adjacent well to see if it starts to draw down.
Like before and after the subject well is pumped?
Correct.
And with that concern, there's certainly several letters related to the Ann Wade parcel. Is that the only neighboring well that would be tested, or would others be tested as well?
I don't know that that's necessarily the one that would be tested. The condition, which is condition number two in your staff report, reads that it would be the nearest adjacent well, and I think there would be one that's closer. The idea being that if that well is not impacted, then anything further away would also not be impacted.
Does that follow?
That's the way that I understand, you know, how wells operate with what's called the cone of depression.
Okay.
We do, as Portia mentioned, we have a well driller who I think is in the audience who can probably speak to that.
Okay, well, I'll save further questions till later then. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? If not, we will open this up to the public. Anybody who'd like to speak on this, please approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Martin Rao. I live at 2103 Table Bluff Road in Lolita, which is immediately adjacent to the subject parcel on the east. So it's my well you're talking about here. Water supply is the fly in the ointment here, for sure. I would like to point out that in the last two general plan updates, the zoning has been held at ag exclusive 160, and the primary reason is scarcity of water. So my well appears to be negatively affected. When my well was drilled in 1999, I had water at 225 feet below my wellhead, and now it's at 355 feet. So, and the only real change is this cannabis operation. The orchid operation previously was in full production at that time, so this is the only real change. Also, my springs, which are 4,000 feet away, are, have gone dry, and my well is the obvious reference well. Sounding is okay with me, but I'm not agreeing to have my well metered. The recent letter from the applicants about reducing their water use is all very well, but there's no specifics there about how they're going to do that. There's no actual commitment in that letter at all. So it's nice words, but I'm skeptical, I'm sorry. We need to define when the dry season is. The dry season on the surface is not the dry season at 350 feet, so that needs to be done late winter sometime. Okay, the next issue is water quality. There's, seems to me that there's a cone of depression caused by the adjacent well, and if that becomes even more remarkable than it is now, it may turn out that since my well is deeper than their well, I may actually be drawing water from, from their, from, towards my well from their well. And if their water is contaminated, which nobody knows anything about, then I'm going to have contaminated water coming out my tap. Third issue is performance. There's a general pattern of non-compliance or grudging compliance in response to complaints. Repeated complaints on the same issue produce a response, but there is no institutional memory there at all. I complain about the same thing over and over, get a response, and then have another problem. Odors, they have committed to not doing any new construction, and they're, are you going to time me out?
Please wrap up. Go, but wrap it up.
They have committed to no new construction, and right now there are six outside dryers operating periodically, and I have trouble with noise, I have trouble with odors. They have committed to doing all their drying inside the shed next to the greenhouses and controlling their odors, and they're not doing that.
All right.
Okay, so.
Just wrap it up.
Odors, noise. My final point is that they have committed to no new construction, no expansion of their footprint. They set the clock at January 1st, 2016, and since then there has been no outside cultivation, their outdoor cultivation in the open area to the left of the pre-existing small greenhouses there, which they're proposing to put hoop houses on and grow on, and that's an expansion of the footprint by my, so anyway. I think the upshot of that is that they should not be exempt from CEQA, that they should be required to do, to bear the full brunt of CEQA, do an EIR.
Thank you.
No questions?
Anybody have questions for the speaker?
No.
Well, since you're up there, sir, since it seems that your well is the nearest well and the one that we are, or that the staff is proposing that we add a condition upon this project, that they do the well test that Mr. Johnson described, are you, have you been in contact with our staff regarding that condition or regarding what they're proposing be doing at your well?
In, in one of my, in, there are three letters in the file, in one of those letters, I volunteered my well as a reference well. Just as a comment, the reference well that they used, there is probably some conductivity, connectivity there, but in terms of months, years maybe, certainly not in terms of hours or minutes.
Okay, so, but I appreciate you, you know, being willing to allow access to their, to their well.
It's in my best interest.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Go ahead.
So have you noticed distinct changes since they switched from other flowers? Then is that what you're saying?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. We have a constant skunky cannabis owner. It's noticeable from the street, it's noticeable at the property line, it's certainly noticeable at my house.
Yes, I can imagine.
I'm downwind.
But I meant in terms of the water. I meant in terms of the water availability or quality, any noticeable changes since the previous flower production?
As the song, as the song goes, you don't miss your well water until the well goes dry. But, so I never sounded my well until this came up, and then I discovered that the static water level in, in my well is down 125 feet from what it was when the well was new.
Okay, so we only have the base point of the 1998, did you say?
1998, 99, yeah.
Okay, and now?
So at that point, the orchids were in full, in full production. So the primary change between then and now is the cannabis withdrawals. Okay? Anything else?
Thank you.
So in the years since 1999, there's been a number of drought years. How do you distinguish between the effects of climate change and the effects that the neighbors are doing on their property?
I can't. Nobody knows. Nobody knows really anything about the perk rate in, in the geological structures, and what I do know is that if, if the upper soil levels are saturated in January or February, we have a heavy rainstorm. In a week, 10 days, 15 days later, I'll have, I'll have some cloudiness in my well. But my well is different from their well. My well has a gravel pack and a 20-foot sanitary seal, so water only has to perk down through 20 feet of structure to get into my well. Anything else?
Thank you, Speaker. Anybody else like to speak on this issue?
Good evening. My name's Earl Cunningham. I'm a resident, excuse me, of Fortuna, and I am here speaking on behalf of Ms. Ann B. Wade. She cannot attend. She's currently undergoing chemotherapy and radiation at Stanford. And she is the one primarily impacted by the water issues here. Excuse my voice, it's had a cold. It's not, it's not coronavirus. She's been primarily impacted. She has been on her property on Table Bluff for 30-plus years and had no well issues. Her well was drilled in the early 80s. Her well was drilled in the early 80s and is at 327 feet. She's had no water problems until the approximately 18 months, two years ago, started experiencing loss of water in her well. And that was primarily at the time of changeover from the flower production to the cannabis production. We've had a hydrologist look at the testing that was done. That's Mr. Richard Levin. He's a retired hydrologist. You'll find supplemental information that's been submitted by him. We're missing a portion of that supplemental information that was submitted in February to the board, to the planner, and it's not included in this summary. So I'd like to ensure that that does get included. He's looked at the well that was used for monitoring. It's outside of a, the zone that would be a normal zone for connectivity. And the fact that neither one of the wells that are nearest was tested for connectivity. And that's actually a requirement of the county by regulation. It's specified in his, his addendum. That's primarily why I'm here tonight to object to this is the situation with Ms. Wade's well has not been addressed. She still is experiencing issues with water at that site. And until that's addressed, we'll continue to object. And we'll object as far as we have to. I'm concluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers that would like to speak on this issue? Sure.
Excuse me, sir. Do you have any other measurements from other years by any chance?
No, I do not. I do not have access to Ms. Wade's well records.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. You spoke of some other supplement or some other test?
No, actually, I submitted, what I spoke of was a response to the test that the applicant did of testing the monitor well and our hydrologist.
So your response?
Yes.
Her response?
Not Ms. Wade's response, but the hydrologist's response.
Okay, and you're saying that it's not included in the agenda packet with any of our information?
Right, that was the, the most recent one that we submitted. And it's stamped February 6th. Was not included in the, in this packet.
Can I ask staff about that?
We're checking the file.
Okay.
I have the record copy here.
We'll have a chance to ask staff questions after public comments. So let's give them some time to find it and, and then we'll go from there. So we'll ask.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Brian Robinson. I am also a neighbor up on Table Bluff. I wanted to say I'm here in support of the owners and operators. I think it's very responsible of them to bring this up to code and to do the steps and to do what's right and to make this work and to follow what is in the county code and to pull all the appropriate permits. People that are doing what's right, I, I think that that gives us all the better shot, especially as a neighborhood, than as potential operators that might try and do things that aren't correct. I'd rather have neighbors next to me that are doing what's right and, and here today in front of you and, and being a part of our community. So again, I support it as a neighbor. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Speaker. Anybody else that would like to speak on this issue? If not, I'd like to ask the applicant or his agent to come up and speak if they're here. Thank you.
Bring it down.
Just bring, yeah.
Keep it down. More, there it goes.
Okay. Up close. Can you hear me? Good evening. My name is Michelle Hill. And I'm the owner and operator of Humboldt Emerald Triangle LLC. My goal at this property is to operate a clean, quiet, organic farm. The site was previously an orchid farm for many years, already developed with a glass greenhouse and some adjacent buildings. And we are not proposing anything beyond the existed, the existing disturbed area and footprints of the buildings. We are essentially transitioning from a previous flower operation to a different kind of flower operation. We are very respectful of our neighbors and try our best to keep the operation quiet. However, it is an agricultural operation and there will be associated noises at times just like any other agricultural operation. We have a small staff of employees, most of which have worked for me for many years. We are a family operation for the most part, and we do not bring in any criminal element into the community as alluded by some of the other comment letters. Nothing could be further from the truth. Besides delivery of supplies and occasional maintenance functions, we have very little traffic to our site. The Christmas tree commercial operation next door brings in hundreds of people a day during their time of operation from the outside to our Table Bluff area. There is a greater chance of criminal element there than from our operation. At the last planning commission meeting, an issue was raised about our existing well and water usage. There was concern about impacts to adjacent properties. So we did a very expensive study strictly following the requirements of the county. The results of the test after pumping for eight hours at the maximum the well could pump, the results were there were no impact on the neighboring well. The suggestion we do an extensive testing every year, including water quality testing of adjacent wells and monitoring of well levels in the area is outside the scope of being reasonable for a small agricultural operation. There would be too many variables beyond the control of our farm as to what other people are doing with their irrigation, expanding usage, or chemical uses, et cetera, which could impact the overall water situation in the area. If an area-wide study is needed by the neighbors, then all properties should share the cost of the study. If this property was used for irrigated alfalfa or Christmas trees like our neighbor, the water demands would greatly increase over and above what our small operation requires. And no one would have any say for the water use for this type of agricultural production. We are committed to seeking ways to use water wisely. Our goal is to be as efficient as possible. And we calculated that we have dropped our water usage over 50% from the original estimate. Additionally, we have been investigating and working with a company for a drip system. If that proves that we will be able to save more water, we will follow through with that. However, at this point in time, based on the factual data, well, data testing, it is in our opinion that our operation will not have an adverse impact to the water table or adjacent neighbors. This is a small family operation and we try to be good neighbors and stewards of the land by staying organic and conserving water. I would request that you approve our project as a pro, as proposed by your staff.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? I have a question if nobody else does. First of all, thank you for allowing me to come out and see your side. Just like disclose that I went out there last week. I guess it was last weekend. Very impressive operation. It's the perfect place, in my opinion, to have this kind of grow. It was very clean. It was very, looked like it was very organized. I mean, they had ADA bathrooms for the staff. It was, it was very impressive. I also knew the site before as an orchid farm and had helped a fellow contractor do some work out there way, way 30 years ago. Just, and what I remember about it, and maybe you can answer this question. It wasn't, isn't something that I asked you out there. But I remember how they watered the orchids back in the day was a, they were like huge troughs that they just filled and the orchids could draw water out of them. And I've got to think that that was, consumed a lot more water than what you were describing, how much you water them and what you just told us. So could you give any more detail on that?
I'm not sure how much water the orchid farm used. I don't know about that. But what I do know is that we use minimal, at our, what we're producing right now, in my opinion, it's minimal water usage. John, who's going to be talking, he has the data from the orchid farm as well.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Nope, thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Flyer. I'm the owner of Humboldt LLC, which is the owner of this property. And I am a neighbor on both sides of this property. My neighbor, my land consists of 260 acres of land surrounding this property. I'm here tonight to add my support to all of my neighbors' rights to farm. And when I say all of my neighbors, I mean all of them. The Humboldt County's Right to Farm Ordinance was created to support agriculture and its economic viability in this county. The land permit 11065 is zoned AE 160. And manufacturing on this specific parcel has all the surrounding land. I support all of my farming activities for all of my neighbors that they choose to participate in because we all live on farmland zoned agriculturally exclusive. I support my neighbor's Christmas tree farm on AE land, not TPZ land, as it should be, but on farmland. It's his land and he should be able to plant, raise, water, fertilize, and sell his ag products like the rest of my neighbors. Some raise racehorses, some beef cattle, some dairy cows, some have horse boarding facilities, some grow hay, some grew orchids, symbidium, other rare fruits, grapes and trees. There was time that many of them grew potatoes. Potatoes as far as the eye could see. And they would fly biplanes over the land to spray fungicides and fertilizers all over the Eel River Valley. All over the very land we are discussing right now and surrounding lands because it's agricultural land. The Right to Farm Ordinance was made to protect farmers on farmland from nuisance complaints, complaints against farmers for farming on ag land. These complaints, each and every one of them, drive up the price of doing farm business and make it economically unviable to farm. Many people decide to build homes on ag land because it's beautiful. I did too. I did so at the pleasure of my farmer neighbor. I did so knowing that, quote, "noises, odors, dust, chemicals, smoke, and hours of operation that may accompany agriculture operations would impact my quality of life." That's from Humboldt County Ordinance. I did so knowing that my neighbors could farm the land 24 hours a day, spread ash, manure, chemicals, fertilizers, use water to raise such crops, animals, and anything else that a farmer could to make a living on farmland zoned for agriculture. A new agricultural crop has provided farmers with the opportunity to keep the agricultural tradition alive for a little bit longer in Humboldt County. Dairy is on the precipice of collapse. Beef as a commodity is being attacked from all sides. Agricultural water usage in California and nationwide is under attack. The very tradition of farming is under attack. This crop is still profitable. It provides jobs, tax base, opportunities for many people in Humboldt County. It has opened the door, it has also opened the door to the most severe threat to Humboldt County Right to Farm Ordinance because we find ourselves defending the right to farm on AE land, agriculture-exclusive land, which the Right to Farm Ordinance was created to protect. Farmers should not have to defend their right to farm on land zoned for agriculture. Let's be perfectly honest here. If it were any other crop, we would not be here tonight. If my neighbors were growing sunflowers or grapes or almonds or orchids or quinoa, rice, or even acres of Christmas tree, all thirsty crops, nothing could or would be said. There would be no light restrictions, water restrictions, noise restrictions, fertilizer restrictions, lab testing, grow taxes, parking restrictions, growing schedules, employee reports, ADA bathrooms required. The current complaint letters submitted are all 100% anecdotal. They provide no evidence whatsoever that the current use of the greenhouse farm is the cause of their troubles. It is all speculation. And this speculation is exactly what the Right to Farm Ordinance was created to stop. Finally, it's not for the lack of water that there's not more development on Table Bluff. Mr. Director Ford knows that intimately because I am a land speculator and a developer. It is, it, water is literally bubbling out of the ground all over the bluff. It's because of zoning. It's AE 160 zoning, agriculture-exclusive, farmland zoning. We should support it or change the zoning. It's unfair to have it both ways. I would like to address a few things of the letters that contain fallacies, anecdotal stories, and wild assumptions. Fact, the greenhouse facility has been in constant farming operation for the past 38 years. It was approved by the California Coastal Commission for 100,000 square feet of greenhouses and water rights. It is currently using 28,000 feet, roughly a quarter of its approved size. And more importantly, that, and I quote, "the original coastal commission permit," which is on page 60 or 64 in your packets. "The conditions of this permit require that irrigation developed for the greenhouses be expanded for the use of the adjoining pasture lands." And this means, and I summarize, as a condition to build these greenhouses, a deep well was required. The deep well was to be used to irrigate up to 100,000 square feet of greenhouses and to provide water for irrigating 24 additional acres of pasture land. Since pasture land irrigation occurs in dry summer months, the California Coastal Commission approved and required the use of water from this well for it. As a conservative estimate, would, that would be 3.25 million gallons of water annually. Yes, I did say 3.5, 3.25 million gallons of water, not including the greenhouses, just to cover the pasture land per year, watering 10 hours a day for six months on 24 acres. It is my contention and belief that since we're being forced to create a baseline, that this facility is entitled to roughly 4.7 million gallons of water per year from its deep water well by the California Coastal Commission. This is nowhere what we will use. But as we are being forced to defend our water rights and usage, that is the number. However, this facility has and continues to use a fraction of the amount of water and approved and required in 1980 for the past 40 years. It's no longer economically viable to water pasture land because of the steep collapse of the dairy and beef markets and opening of world farming markets. Fact, Mr. Rao has made a number of statements in his letters. He's basically picking up a pile of manure and throwing it up on the wall and hoping that it sticks. And not one of his complaints has he provided any evidence whatsoever. He has done no tests, no noise studies, no light studies, no pictures, no evidence, nothing. As a matter of fact, Mr. Rao also operates an agricultural facility next door, a Christmas tree farm. Since we are just going to throw out assertions, shouldn't Mr. Rao have to follow the same standards he suggests his neighbor follow? Christmas trees are suggested to use one to two gallons of water per day. He farms just under four acres of them. How does his water use impact our well? Christmas tree farms are notorious for herbicides, pesticides, fungicides, fertilizers, et cetera, to maintain a picture-perfect product. His chemicals could have the exact same delterious effect on his own domestic water as he claims the greenhouses may have. Except, all of the land around him, including the greenhouse facility, is registered with the state of California and certified by CCOF as certified organic land. There can be no use of pesticides or fertilizers that are not organic. The cannabis crop is the most regulated crop known. It is tested exhaustively. Any chemicals found in it render it worthless. I guess the question should be asked is, should I be more worried about the possible of Mr. Rao's use of chemicals polluting my organic ground? Or the tenant's crop? Mr. Rao maintains a greenhouse on his property. Should his facility need to verify its water use as it may impact our water rights?
I need to wrap it up.
Okay, all right. I, okay, I mean, I could submit these. It's, it's longer, but I will, I want to address, may I address the guns? Can I do that?
Sure.
Okay. There have never been any guns on that property, ever. Checked with the sheriff's department. It's just a fallacy. Okay? I will submit this and if you guys want to continue to read it, I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Uh, excuse me, I have a, I have a question. You, you said you've been there for 30, 30 years?
The greenhouse facility has, not me. The greenhouse facility has been in operation for 38 years.
I was wondering if in the previous agricultural endeavors, there had been complaints about the water, the wells, or anything like that when it was a different crop?
When the doctor, when Dr. Whitwer owned it, the same complaints from the same neighbors occurred for different issues. It was always a constant battle between neighbors there. That's one of the reasons that when Dr. Whitwer passed away, she wanted to, his wife wanted to sell it and get out, and that's why. So there was always complaints. It's just not, it's what the complaint is for the week.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So was, maybe you don't want to answer this question either, but was there cannabis being grown there before?
Before 2016.
Yeah.
2015 it started. Yeah. There was orchids there and all kinds of other crazy greenhouse fruits and neat things. It was a beautiful place.
Yeah. Okay. So that's interesting. Thank you.
Yeah. Are you?
I'm with him.
With him, okay. Let's try to keep it short as we can.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's John McCarthy, and I'm principal engineer and owner of Shasta Engineering and Consulting. I've been involved with land development projects, water well and water systems for over 40 years throughout California. I've been working with Humboldt Emerald Triangle since the beginning of their project. Michelle Hill, the owner, has done everything within her power to operate a clean, quiet, organic farm operation. It bears repeating to say that the site was previously an orchid farm for over 30 years, already developed with the glass greenhouse and some of the outbuildings. The whole development as it sits now was approved by the coastal commission some years ago. It was also a cannabis farm for a number of years prior to Michelle taking over. How interesting is it that there were not a lot of issues by neighbors regarding water over the past years, even though there was cannabis operation going on? It's clearly obvious that this is a case of certain residents taking advantage of the government process to eliminate an agricultural farm in an agricultural area by residential residents without any supporting data or reports to support their accusations. Accusations are easy to make. We have provided staff with technical reports, hard data from noise studies, water well drawdown studies. Both of these have shown no meaningful impacts to the surrounding neighbors. The applicant is not proposing development beyond the existing disturbed area and the footprints of the buildings that were approved long ago. There are no new environmental impacts that rise to the level of needing more study or review because the operation continues very similar to as it has been in the past. Being respectful to the neighbors and running a clean, organic farm is Michelle's stated We've talked a bit about the well test. I won't go into a lot of detail on that, but I was there during the well testing myself, and I can certify that it was done properly. There, the other issue that came up was chemicals, and as was mentioned by John Flyer, this is an organic farm. So they have to be very, very careful about what they use, and cannabis is one of the most highly regulated products, and the testing that goes into it is incredible. So regarding the overall water situation, if there is a perceived need by the neighbors for an area-wide water study because they're all having some kind of water problems, then all of the properties in this area should share in the cost of a study. All properties should meter their water. All properties should report their monthly water usage to the county. Consider this, agricultural uses such as irrigated pasture will consume more water than this simple cannabis operation. As an example, alfalfa, for instance, would take 3.2 million gallons to irrigate this property. This property is only using 339,000 gallons. So I think you can see the difference. And for alfalfa, doesn't need a permit from the county. We are committed to seeking ways to use water wisely. Michelle and her staff have done a great job in bringing the water usage down. I think you can see from the staff report substantially. It's our goal not to have an adverse impact on any of the neighbors or on the water table. This is a small family operation, trying to be good neighbors and good stewards of the land by staying organic. I would request that you approve the project as proposed by your staff and would appreciate the time to address any other issues that you may have or that the public may bring up. Thank you very much.
We have a question.
Thank you. This, this testimony has been enlightening, and now that I understand a little bit better the context of surrounding agricultural operations and water use, I guess I want to ask if this condition number two, which Mr. Johnson noted, is now part of the recommended conditions of approval, that this applicant must test the nearest adjacent well within one year of approval to determine connectivity, and if that shows, I want to get the wording right, if the testing demonstrates that use of the cannabis supply well results in the drawdown of the adjacent well, the applicant shall install 206,000 gallons of water storage. Can you guys live with that?
You know, we thought that the condition was onerous on this project, but in order to be a good neighbor and to get along, the applicant was willing to say, okay, we will acquiesce to that. We will test, and we'll be happy to test, and if we, if need be, put in water storage.
Okay. I mean, it does seem like you are going the extra mile to appease the neighbors here, given that we don't know how much the Christmas tree farm is using, and he says he's unwilling to meter his own well and so forth. I'm not, I'm not diminishing the concerns of the neighbors, but this is, this is an actively used agricultural area. If, if the, if the aquifer is being drawn down, and certainly climate change and rainfall patterns could have some role in well depth over the last few years, but anyway, you know, I just want to note that you guys are agreeing to terms that none of the neighbors have agreed to and bearing the full burden of any impact that your agricultural operation might have on shared water supply. So you're to be commended as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question for staff.
Thank you, then. This is a question for staff.
So I guess I'm fairly pleased with the responses to the, the neighbor's letter that we've, that we've been hearing about. But one item that was brought up briefly was, was runoff, and I was wondering if staff could highlight for us any of the conditions of approval that would relate to runoff and pollution of groundwater?
Thank you. So condition of approval number 10 is really the most appropriate there, which is that not only is the cannabis operation going to need to enroll with the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board's cannabis program, but they will need to provide to us a copy of their final site management plan that, that shows that they're complying with that requirement. And that's intended to address runoff, among other things, from the site. So we do believe that by complying with the state's general cannabis order, that they would be, that there were not, there should not be an issue with runoff from the site.
Thank you. If I could, through the chairs, just real quickly, I did want to point out one thing that one of the speakers noted that a February letter that was submitted was not included in the staff report, and he is correct. We did look, and so that was distributed to all of you just now. I just wanted to, to point that out for the record.
Thank you. Mike?
So I just had one question regarding that letter there. Staff review that and have any recommendations or, or thoughts about it?
Yes, actually, we, we have reviewed it, and that was part of what led to us working with the applicant to develop that condition of approval number two.
Okay.
And so we actually think that most of those concerns that are raised in that letter are addressed through the application of that condition.
For condition two.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted to find out.
Did the applicant have anybody else that was going to speak on behalf of them? Please come up.
My name's Don Watson. I own Watson Well, which is the company that did.
Can you aim the microphone more at that?
Sure.
There you go.
How's that?
That would be better.
I'm Don Watson. I own the company who, Watson Well, who did this test on the bluff. I've, I've listened to not just this situation, but others, and when it comes to water, it never ceases to amaze me, the discussions that we see ourselves getting into without factual information. And everything that I've put on this report with regards to this well test is factual. This well, we got into this well to change a pump, which every time we get into a well, we measure depth, we measure static water level. We date it, and we keep records for purposes of future entries into these wells so we can monitor and keep track of the factual data of that particular well. And in the, in the situation or in the circumstances of the bluff, my company has been involved with a number of the wells up there and have historic record on those wells. The Wade across the street, we actually, when we first came into the area, rented that property and ran our business out of that until we secured a more commercial location. And being a water professional, it was interesting to hear the complaints recently on that well alone because that was an incredible well. And I'm persuaded that unless there's some factual information that's provided to me to, to look at and to review, I would be surprised that anything has changed. It's interesting how these two complaints that have been filed, there is no historical data, and I would, I would suggest that to move into annual testing of wells, I think that's a burden that you put on the applicant that is unfair. And if you can't prove where your well was originally and have absolutely no factual data on that, I don't know how you can create a baseline to penalize potentially, you know, somebody that does have that information. It's interesting that in October, we were in this well, and we pulled a pump, we measured static level, and then when we went back two months later, four, three months later, that the static level had actually come up two foot. So when I hear that a well has dropped from its origination about 130 foot or so, I'm not so quick to say that the aquifer is getting pumped down or drawn down. I'm not quick to say that climate change has had an impact on that well. When I look at the records of all of the wells in that area and other wells that we work on, you know, I don't see those kind of immediate impacts. If a well has dropped 130 foot of static water, there's other things that I would look at before I looked at the impact of a well that's actually gone up. You know, the closest well to it has gone up two foot in static. I would take a look at, I would take a look at biological conditions that can cause the, the reduction of that static level in that well. I would take a look at organic or mineral conditions that could cause that well static level drop, which essentially means that there's clogging in those perforations. However, that well's been constructed, and I propose that the owners of the wells don't know that. There's things that can cause water from not getting back into that well, and we've been able to measure those levels drop through wells that we've worked on through the years. And to solve and remedy those, there's mechanical and chemical things that we can do that are NSF rated to increase those yields in those wells and bring them back to where their original level was. So in conclusion, I would say this, that out of all of the three counties and further into the state that we've worked, I can't find better water than it's up on that Table Bluff, number one. Number two, I've never seen any negative impact in all of my years on that bluff on any well with regards to pumping and overpumping. Number three, most users of those wells are using them not just for ag, but also for domestic purposes. And we are heavy into water treatment in my company, and I've never had to deal with any water conditions on that bluff as a result of chemicals, chemical infiltration. If I understood the gentleman previously, he said he had a 20-foot sanitary saline as well. That's designed by code to keep chemical penetration from surface water down into a well. So, so those are some of my observations. I think that if you're to be fair, let's get down to some factual information. Even the hydrologist that you brought up, I don't know how he could make the, you know, the statements that he's making, you know, without having any of this factual information.
Melanie has a question for you.
I'm so glad you showed up. So given your experience in that area, you've put in a lot of wells in that general area, I assume, is what you're saying. So is that, because the averages are not very good, as you point out, you know, we're looking at this particular area. So have you noticed or been aware that there have been drops, and if so, you know, due to climate changes or whatever? And so if so, what would those typical drops be? And would this one be atypical?
No, I've, I've never seen any. All, all the wells that we work on, again, were, were hugely factual. I, I train my sons, my staff, that when you get into a well, we've got reports, we've got forms you fill out, and you don't put anything on that form unless it's substantiated through sounders, through measurement tools, devices, flow meters, everything's factual. And from the fact of the matter, I have not seen any negative impact on any of those wells in that area, or for that matter, out of the area. We don't have enough time to talk about all of them, but I just have not seen that from a professional level, from a factual level.
Oh, so, so relative to other places that are growing cannabis of similar, you know, production, that this is, this is atypical then, which is why you think it's due to some other cause of blockage or what have you?
Correct. If you've lost 130 foot ahead in a, in a well, and everything around there has gone up, your next-door neighbor's static head for the same date range has gone up two foot. Number one, I would question the records. How do you know where was the original static at? Number two, there's probably a biological or a mineral issue that's causing that, that decline, if in fact it's true.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? No. So with that, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the, no. Thank you. So, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion at this time. I'd like to move that we find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15301 and 15303 of the state sequel guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use.
Any other questions? No. So with that, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the...
Is it allowed to use the blow?
No. Thank you. So, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion at this time. I'd like to move that we find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15301 and 15303 of the State Sequoia Guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and coastal development permit based on the evidence in the staff report and public testimony, and adopt the resolution approving the Humboldt Emerald Triangle LLC conditional use permit and coastal development permit as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
So we have a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion?
I just had one other question of staff regarding about the open section there that proposed greenhouses are possibly going to be out. And is it in use? Has it been in use?
You're referring to this section here?
That one.
Yes. This actually had hoop houses there that got destroyed by the wind.
Recently.
Recently.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? So we have a motion and a second.
Call for the vote. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So... So before we get into the next project, I think we'll take a small break, so let's take 10 minutes and come back. That'll give staff time to get set up, too.
7:25?
Yep, sounds good. Thank you. All right. So the next item up is number six, and that's the Rocky Costa Conditional Use Permit. If we can have a staff report, that'd be great.
Thank you, members of the commission. Before we get into the details of this project, I just wanted to provide a little context. This application came in front of the Planning Commission last September, and at that time, staff was recommending denial of this project. The reason for that was that it's located on Warren Creek Road, which is known to have some substantial issues with it. It's not a Category Four road. It is very narrow in some areas, and the applicant was at that time unwilling to prepare or have prepared an engineered road analysis that would look at the road and provide suggested improvements that might be able to accommodate the commercial traffic. Since, at that hearing, there actually was not a lot of public opposition that had been raised prior to that hearing. So at the hearing, the commission expressed a willingness to consider approval of the project if the information was provided that would show that the road was not going to be, you know, that the road was not going to be unsafe. So the staff report that's in front of you now, we are recommending approval. That's the primary reason for that. Since that hearing, though, there has been a very large amount of public opposition. And a lot of the comments that we have received do relate to the commission's ability to make the finding that this would not impact the general health, safety, or welfare, which is a required finding for approval. And we do believe that a lot of those concerns are probably best addressed in this public meeting. And so if you read through the staff report, again, we are recommending approval. We have provided an alternative recommendation as well. And so with that, I'd just like to turn this over to Elizabeth Moreno, and she'll go into the details of the application.
Good evening, commissioners. The, my name is Elizabeth Moreno. Like Cliff said, I am the assigned planner for Mr. Rocky Costa for the conditional use permit for seeking approval for new unenclosed cannabis cultivation in the Blue Lake Community Planning Area. Here you have the parcel highlighted in blue. It's about five acres in size. It is on agricultural general with a land use designation of residential agricultural. The Mad River and Leggett Creek meander east adjacent to the parcel. The parcel or the project site is about 200 feet out of the Mad River's 100-year flood zone. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a 100-year flood zone.
Yep.
The project is going for 10,000 square feet of new outdoor cannabis cultivation, open air. The water source is rainwater catchment and for dry, a combination of, excuse me, a combination of rainwater catchment and dry farming. Power is provided by PG&E, and processing will occur off-site. The applicant is proposing to relocate an existing driveway to be contained within the 50-foot right-of-way located here north of the parcel. The driveway provides access to both the property and also to the adjacent parcel. The reason why is because the applicant wants to relocate the cultivation where the existing road is located now. As you can see here, this is an arrow view map showing the fence north of the property, and that's where Mr. Rocky Costa would like to move the existing road. Here is the applicant's plot plan. As you can see, here is the proposed cultivation, and this is the driveway that is going to be relocated here to the north. Here is the proposed nursery. Here are some of the water tanks that he's proposing to harvest the rainwater. And the purple rectangle there is an existing shed where he is proposing to dry. These two things right here is our existing trailers that will be removed off-site. The project site is accessed by Warren Creek Road off West End. About .95 mile of Warren Creek Road is currently maintained. The Department of Public Works has indicated that Warren Creek Road does not meet carried for standards due to the fact that the road is quite narrow with multiple pinch points and with limited site distance. On December 9, 2019, the applicant submitted a road evaluation completed by Green Works Consultant. Public Works went out to the site to evaluate the road after receiving community concerns and provided additional comments on January 6, 2020. Public Works recommended that in order for the road to meet functional capacity, the applicant shall install seven turnouts on Warren Creek Road. Subsequently, the, on January 11, 2020, the applicant submitted a revised road evaluation to include Public Works comments and added two additional turnouts for a total of nine turnouts, and additional warning signage that the road narrows on Warren Creek Road. The road evaluation has been reviewed and accepted by Public Works and also recommended that the applicant restricts the use of any automobile wider than a regular pickup during the off-peak hours of 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and that all turnout shall be completed prior to engagement in any cultivation operations, prior, excuse me. This is the Warren Creek Road Evaluation Map that Green Works Consultant provided. Additionally, excuse me, additionally, the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District provided comments on February 6, 2019 regarding the major, a major water transmission line under Warren Creek Road. And as a condition of approval, the applicant shall contact Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District prior to installing these turnouts and have them approve of the plan and addition, the traffic management plan. Like Cliff mentioned before in this, in the beginning of the presentation, we have received numerous opposing letters from the community since our last meeting, and they're located on Attachment Six. And additional to that, they're also in the supplemental. The community's main concern include odor pollution, increased traffic, public safety, and the loss of sense of place and community. The community has raised concerns that the odor from cannabis operation will degrade their quality of life and the ability to enjoy long-standing community traditions as for the Fourth of July parade, where they actually parade down the road. Another concern is that the road evaluation made its analysis off-season, and that the fact that the road evaluation states that there will be safety concerns if the recommendations to the traffic management plan are not adhered to. The applicant has attempted to address some of these concerns. He's agreed to do the turnouts. He has agreed to join or attempt to create a road association, and he has also executed a security plan. Planning staff is recommending approval for this project and has prepared an addendum to the mitigated narrative declaration for the Planning Commission to consider. And if the Planning Commissioners find the project to be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, we recommend finding the project exempt from the Sequoia, excuse me, exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15270 of the Sequoia Guidelines. Public Works is also in the public today if you have additional comments for them. And Public Works, yeah, Public Works is here. So I can also answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions for staff?
How many employees are we assuming will be working at the project upon full buildout?
According to the applicant's plot plan, zero.
So am I...
Excuse me, the applicant's operations plan. There will be no employees hired.
So it will be run by the people that already live on the site?
Yes.
Okay. And this is even during the harvest season?
That is correct. He is proposing to process off-site.
But harvesting is not part of processing, correct?
That is correct. Dryin' will be done on site, and he is claiming that no employees will be on the property, only family-operated business.
Okay, thank you.
I also would like to add that if, I think the applicant's here in the audience, and he's also available for comments or questions.
Any other questions? If not, okay, we're going to open this up to the public, and we'll ask for the applicant to wait till the end and come up, so maybe they can answer questions that come up. Thank you. So anybody who would like to speak, please come on up and get in line.
My name's John Murray. There's two things first. The people from Warren Creek Road that are against the site, they just raised their hands, so you know what you're dealing with.
Can't hear you, John. You have to talk.
Okay. The people from Warren Creek Road that are against the project that are here, but they just raised their hand.
Yes, thank you.
The other thing, there's two videos that have been prepared, the staff has video. If you allow them to push the button, they will show you a couple of videos.
Okay, didn't know anything about it, so...
How long?
How long are they? That's a good question.
Less than three minutes.
Okay, go ahead, let's...
This is Costa's property at 1734 Warren Creek Road. So some examples of the current stewardship happening down there, the footprint on the land so far, debris from prior cultivation is still there from at least 2016. Used soil up against the Weaver fence line and property on the other side of it, there's a section of our fence that was taken down without our permission. Okay, once again, this shows you just how high the piles of dirt are and how close it's stacked next to our fence. This is a burnout motor home up on the hill. A little closer view right there. And coming up, some piles of debris and the motor home that's currently in use. I don't have any idea what type of plumbing or sewage they're using currently. This is the road, the right-of-way that we've been using for the past over 50 years. It was in existence when the Costas purchased their property approximately 20 years ago. This little area is where they wanted to put a turnout. It is to be fenced and used by one of the neighbors as a vegetable garden. Later on, we'll see.
All right, let's start three minutes now.
Thank you. Once again, my name is John Murray.
We'll re... Very good.
I got involved in this because about 10 years ago, I came into the county offices to apply for a secondary dwelling unit. And I was told you can't do anything on Warren Creek Road unless you bring it up to Category Four. I didn't want to relocate a railroad trestle and move dirt and acquire right-of-way. So when this came up, conditional use permit, I decided I would follow it. September, the owner came in and said, "There are no road problems," but you told him rightfully, "Get a professional engineer." I'm a professional engineer, so I turned in my own road report because I figured his would be biased. Warren Creek Road itself, the county portion, has five or six pinch points. The gravel portion has pinch points, one-lane roads, blind turns, many problems. And I thought, okay, he's going to be biased. Let's see what he comes in with. Green roads, or whatever they're called, said, "Fill in one pothole, everything will be fine." And I'm going, whoa. And I'm going, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, this is not bias, this is malfeasance." So when I was with the county, I used to be your public works director for those of you that don't know me, there were some people, I did not allow to turn in hydraulics reports, some engineers, because they just didn't know what they were doing. There were a couple firms, "No, you cannot do soils report." I'm very skeptical of what was turned into you. But anyway, if I can't get a conditional use permit for a secondary dwelling unit, I don't know why this should be done. Also in the green report said, "There are 27 vehicles a day using the road." Well, no, down at West End, you have about 800 vehicles a day. Down where they are, where there's another Four Homes Pass where he did his count, yeah, there's 27. But anyway, I just see this from a county's perspective, you're starting down a slippery slope, you allow one conditional use permit, okay, I'm going to come in, there's some other people that have been turned in. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. If there's going to be a lot of speakers, please line up so that we can get through it as quickly as possible. Next speaker, please.
Bring this down to a normal person's height. Hello, my name is Dave Kinzer. I have lived on the private portion of Warren Creek Road for 35 years. And I'm going to kind of piggyback on what John had to say. Two road reports have been submitted by Robin Collins and two cultivation and operation plans were submitted by consultants Megan Ryan and Cara Cardoni. There are many inaccuracies and omissions in Mr. Collins' first road report, and in my opinion, Mr. Collins' second report is as inaccurate and biased as his first. He simply glossed over obvious errors and omitted other pertinent facts. The average daily traffic count on his second report does not give an accurate account of traffic on Warren Creek Road. The sampling time period was too short. Location of the county strips missed out on two artery roads further reducing the count. Old data was mixed with new data and the timing and count of the count taken was done during winter vacations of many people who were out of town. Humboldt County Public Works stated, "The entire road segment is not developed to the equivalent of a road category four or better. Therefore, Public Works required an additional form to be filled out by a civil engineer." Again, Robin Collins filled this role. Three of the boxes on this form he checked as no effect are not accurate representations. Box A, pattern of curve-related crashes, and direct quote from Hobby Patrol stated that not all crashes are reported. Got that by going down to their station. I myself have been hit by a corner cutting speeder on my own vehicle a number of years ago. Another resident had a head-on collision on a corner just east of Blackberry Rain Lane Road Sign, which was shown on your video here. Both incidents went unreported. Box C of the same form, substantial encroachment. Anyone who lives in this county knows that spring vegetation growth will and does occur significant encroachment on rural roads and does create encroachment. And box E on the same form, known speeds substantially higher than designed speed of the road. Our residents know for a fact that many drivers go well beyond the posted speed limits along this entire road, especially the gravel portion. I believe an engineering report should be an unbiased and objective evaluation of the condition and functional capacity of the road without anecdotal statements and assumptions made with no supportive data. I'm almost done. Additionally, Ms. Cardoni's revised cultivation plan includes an inaccurate description of how wind currents will only travel from north to east up the river basin and not blow cannabis odor toward adjacent landowners. This is grossly inaccurate. The true path of the winds will not only blow odor, but possibly fertilizer residue and pesticides toward adjacent landowners.
Please wrap up.
I am, the last sentence. "It is unfortunate that your efforts as a governing board to apply due diligence and thoroughly evaluate in this permit application must be lie on biased and inaccurate reports. I hope that you act fairly and accordingly and deny this permit." Thank you.
Thank you. Please honor the time limits. There's a lot of people that want to speak.
My name is Lyle Schmidt. I live at 1236 Warren Creek Road. My family and I moved to my present home on Warren Creek Road 69 years ago. With respect to the total length of the private portion of Warren Creek Road, that is the gravelled portion, approximately 29% traverses my properties. Naturally, I'm using portions of the properties adjacent to the road for various purposes and have been for decades. This has been the situation for over 70 years, as it was this way when my family and I moved to this property. Some of the proposed road changes would require me to essentially abandon my usage of these portions of my property. No doubt this situation applies to my neighbors' properties as well. If the requirement of road modifications to the private portion of Warren Creek Road is accepted and complied with by the permit applicant, then at that time, the modifications become not only a permit requirement, but also an imposition on my use of my private property. If traffic safety is a concern, then stop the traffic rather than burden the people that own the road's properties. While it may be legal, it certainly does not seem to be fair or even just imposition. There is a sign at the junction of the paved and gravel portion of Warren Creek Road. This sign has vertical lettering indicating a dividing line. One side is labeled private, the other side county. The sign was put there by the county, therefore the county assumes no responsibility beyond this point, and yet here we have the county reassuming oversight and liability. Private should mean that individuals, not bureaucracies, administer most of the concerns of private properties. Imposition of one size fits all regulations is abusive to the term private. Concerning the property at 1734 Warren Creek Road, it should be noted that the applicant for the grow permit does not own the property. This raises a questions, one, whether the property owner who's not living on the property is aware of the impacts to the owner's neighbors; two, what the owner's liabilities may be in this matter; and three, whether this third-party arrangement should influence this commission's decisions. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Sam and I am speaking on behalf of Paul Ginatoli this evening. I'm going to read a letter from him. "My name is Paul Ginatoli. My wife and I live at 1264 Warren Creek Road. We are the owners of Warren Creek Farms and farm the fields adjacent to the proposed project. We have been certified organic by CCOF since 1991. I think it's great that Mr. Costa wants to farm organically. However, I don't think he understands what that means. To say you're going to farm organically, you will register with the California Department of Agriculture, submit onsite inspection of your growing practices, financial records, provide a list of your inputs, and a long-range organic system plan as well as advised by all the rules of the USDA National Organic Program. You can't just say you're going to farm organically. I am concerned about the additional traffic the permit will allow, not only wear and tear on the road, but all of the dust that will land on my crops. We use the headlands as a turning area when disking, plowing, rolling the fields, as well as to move equipment and stay off the road. We use the barnyard for parking the few cars that arrive, perhaps four on order days, fewer if people bicycle out to work. Leaving vegetation in the fence prevents deer from crawling under the fence as well as providing habitat for beneficial insects and wildlife. I ask that you take these matters into consideration when you make your decision. His farming practices could have a negative effect on my farm." And I would like to add something on behalf of myself, as a member of the Weberg family. I am personally concerned about this matter and how it may negatively impact our quality of life due to traffic, smell, and security concerns. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mike Sepenio, a resident of Warren Creek, and with regard to the road association, we don't have one, nor do we see the need for one. We are very fortunate to have a neighborhood that is free of conflict over road issues. We have an informal process which is based on a get-it-done philosophy. John Lima and Ron Borges donate their time and heavy equipment to take care of the road from Cedar Lane to the paved county road. From Cedar Hill to the end of the road, Lyle Schmidt donates his time and equipment to maintain the road. This section of the road is the most vulnerable part of the entire road. Recently, money was collected to fix a section around the farm. This past summer, we spent $3,000 to repair the last 800 feet of the road. We use the services of Lyle and Alves Inc. for this. This section around the farm, in spite of lower traffic volumes, is the most difficult section to maintain, and as is stated, is the most vulnerable. To set the financial record straight, Robin Costa has contributed road money in the past and within the past month paid $125 for the latest project. When we did the big project last summer, one of our neighbors called Rocky asking for money for the road. His call was never returned. The Costas have never paid for any money for the first part of the road done by Borges and Lima. I believe the Costas know our system as Robin has interacted with Lyle. There is also another really troubling area. Item two in the attachment of the conditions and approval calls for the installation of the eight turnouts. If you look at page 45, it's Costa states the following. "We will join the road association immediately in 2020. We had not been aware that the landowner Rodney Costa was not already a member." It goes on to state that "we commit to offering to cover the road costs on behalf of the neighbors on completing the sale of our first harvest in 2020 and ongoing for the duration of our permitted farm." So in essence, what he's asking is for the neighbors to fund the turnouts. This is a big advantage for the applicant and a little or no benefit to the neighbors. Isn't this proposition similar to what he asked you to do in September, which was give him the permit and he would do the road report later? Costa makes the claim that there's already commercial traffic on the road. Let's focus on the vulnerable stretch. He pointed to Redwood Forest Products, a mobile mechanic, and Warren Creek Farms and trucks from the Water District. Redwood Products makes the left-hand turn coming out of Cedar Hill. They never turn right towards the end of the road. The mobile mechanic died 10 years ago. He was a mobile mechanic, meaning he drove out in the truck in the morning, came back in the afternoon. The farm has incredibly light footprint, which was just talked about. Last thing I want to say is we do have a traffic management plan. Many of us use, have all of our UPS, FedEx, and US Mail packages delivered to Lyle Schmidt's house. Some of the neighbors have doubled up on the size of our propane tanks to eliminate the number, or to reduce the number of propane deliveries. The bottom line, I'm asking you, on behalf of my family and my neighbors, to deny this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's David Nims. I'm an attorney. I represent the Weberg Trust, which owns land adjacent to the subject property. I'm here tonight primarily to help my client and other community members make a full and complete record of their objections to this proposed project. First, I'd like to make two procedural objections. The commission noted at the start of tonight's meeting that it intended and is, in fact, departing from its standard practice, allowing an applicant additional time to speak and to get the final word. Second, this project failed to meet the ordinance requirements before being staffed and referred for a recommendation that it be granted, subject to conditions. I think this shows a predetermined outcome and failed to give adequate notice and consideration to the community members that have stated their opposition to it. One of the primary items I wanted to address is the fact that the proposed development of the road to meet the category four requirements and Public Works recommendations requires the applicant to develop seven turnouts. Many of these turnouts would be located on either the Water District's property, where they currently maintain the shoulder of the road as blocking for their traffic for their own good reasons. They don't want members of the public or other private citizens such as the Costas to drive onto areas where they maintain water meters or on other private neighboring landowner's property. Mr. Bronckel would tell the commission that it's certainly within the Costas' easement rights to develop within the 50-foot wide easement, which brings me to my next point, which is that the Webergs themselves are the beneficiaries of an easement across the Costas parcel. For decades, they have maintained a roughly 12-foot wide use of road, private road, to get to their parcel to the east of the subject property. They've also granted licenses to numerous members of the public because to the east of the Costas property, there are hiking trails and there's access to the river bar. The current project calls for the existing 12-foot wide path of vehicle travel to be relocated in such a manner that it would deny the Webergs the ability to use their deeded 50-foot wide easement. I would say to the commission that, with my limited time remaining, allowing the Costas to do so would violate the Webergs' easement rights, deeded easement rights, similar to how if the Costas insist on developing these turnouts, they are burdening the owners of these servient tenements in such a way that there is the prospect of serious litigation. My final comment would be, as I'm wrapping up here, that if the commission does approve this project, I would ask to impose a condition that the applicant conduct survey work, share the results of that survey with the affected landowners, and communicate adequately with those landowners before conducting any of the proposed turnout development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Burns and my husband and I own a house on 1146 Warren Creek Road. Tonight, I'm representing a neighbor, Susan Smith. I'm reading her letter tonight, but I also want to add that I absolutely support the concerns that the rest of my neighbors have. So here we go. "My husband and I have lived on Warren Creek Road for 32 years. I'd like to speak to you about the inappropriateness of the proposed commercial cannabis grow in our neighborhood. Other neighbors are addressing more specific details, such as, one, the vulnerability of a very narrow unpaved road; two, concerns for personal safety based on past and recent experiences with Mr. Costa's tenants; three, issues of increased traffic and inconsistencies in the Green Road Consulting reports; and four, the odor of marijuana throughout our area. But an important aspect of all the objections is the quality and welfare of our neighborhood, thus the inappropriateness of this proposed business. This is a quiet semi-rural neighborhood on a private unpaved dead-end road, which we maintain without cost of the county and without a road association through our neighbors' contributions of money and willing labor with tractors and shovels. Allowing Mr. Costa to create traffic turnouts and install signage on the other private property for his personal benefit would be an intrusion on their space. Additionally, we will all suffer from the odor of a cannabis grow, regardless of Mr. Costa's claim to the contrary. Winds certainly do carry odors throughout the area, not just to the southeast, as he incorrectly states. I would like to emphasize the inappropriateness of a commercial marijuana grow in this neighborhood. It's a bit hard to understand why we should have to defend our neighborhood to this extent, but it's a legal process and we're participating in it. Issues of substantially increased traffic and pervasive odor would be inevitable and the feeling of safety where we live would likely become a thing of the past. As mentioned earlier, specific instances of these issues of safety, traffic, and odor are addressed by other neighborhoods. In closing, the quality of life in this small community will inevitably be reduced if this proposal is approved. I urge you to deny the application for marijuana cultivation. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
My name is Robin Kinzer. We recognize the planning commission has a difficult job deciding whether cannabis grows comply with land use rules. As one neighbor stated, "The problem with rules is you can't think of everything." And in our case, those steadfast rules may not apply. Just because someone has five acres doesn't mean the land is located in the right area for a cannabis grow. Rocky Costa stated in the September 5th board meeting, quote, "The neighbors that hadn't gripped about any smell before the property's been grown," unquote. There's likely a reason for this, fear and intimidation. There's a history for the last 20 years since Costas owned the property of threatening and violent behavior. In approximately 2003, our children were going down the Rebergs River Access easement through the Costa property when they were threatened by someone running at them with a baseball bat. them with a baseball bat. In the last 20 years, two buildings exploded. Our KF Fire Department documented one structured fire on January 18th, 2007, again, March 18th, 2011. More recently, in February 2018, Arcade Blue Lake, Arcade Fire and Blue Lake were called upon to deal with the burn that was a concern. Though the Costas stated that the unsavory tenants and squatters were removed in 2017, there still continues to be documented and undocumented issues, as you're going to hear from other neighbors. In February 2017, the Sheriff's Department documented an assault with a deadly weapon. In March of 2017, then in August of 2019, the sheriff was called out to deal with domestic assault issues. We feel there is a history with the Costa family and their vetting of people who they have allowed to live on this parcel. Not only do they speed up and down our private road, they've created an atmosphere of fear and concern for our safety and the safety of our children, grandchildren, and our pets. We live on Blackberry Lane, which intersects with Warren Creek Road. We do get Costa traffic. People don't read signs. Instead of turning east or left on Warren Creek Road, they go straight ahead and up Blackberry Lane, even though the directions tell them to stay on Warren Creek Road. Point is, we believe we will be affected by their delivery traffic. Sadly, we believe allowing any cannabis grows on Warren Creek Road could set a precedent in all semi-rural neighborhoods. These are really special family neighborhoods, and they're becoming a thing of the past. Any cannabis grows simply don't belong in neighborhoods. We ask that you do what is right for the majority and not the minority. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bill Abler. I live on Warren Creek Road. On the principle that the tail should not be allowed to wag the dog, I submit that the proposed Warren Creek Road cannabis grow will allow one five-acre parcel to transform the character of the entire mile-and-a-half-long road from residential to, in practice, industrial, affecting at least 70 houses on at least 150 acres. I hope you're taking notes. The cannabis grow will be worked by employees and visited by customers, whose numbers can only be guessed, and who will see this residential road as a commercial highway, where speed and efficiency are the top priority. Any resident who walks on the road, and this includes children, who will soon be of school age, will be at increased risk from traffic. Since the proposed grow is at the end of the road, the entire road will be affected. People living in the little village of houses across the road from the grow site will breathe cannabis vapor constantly, placing their health at risk, possibly making their residences unlivable. Developmental concerns place children at even greater risk. A cannabis grow will be worth a lot of money. Along with employees and customers, would-be thieves will travel the entire length of Warren Creek Road, West End Roads, placing all residents at risk. The grow will, itself, will require guards who will be suspicious of all passersby, even families with children, creating a hostile environment. Once a commercial or commercial-like operation is established on Warren Creek Road, it will open the way to further development. On the principle that the tail should not be allowed to wag the dog, I submit that one five-acre property should not be allowed, in effect, to change the character of an entire residential and wildlife region into what would be, in practice, an industrial zone in everything but name. And just as a personal note, I have two years of firewood that I cut, hauled, chopped, and stacked right next to the road, and if they widen it, I don't know what I'm gonna do. Elbow grease.
Thank you, Speaker.
Good evening. My name is Victor Obin. My family and I moved to Warren Creek Road in 1971, this month, and began raising our children there. I was a teacher at Fieldbrook School. Actually, Rocky was in my class for a couple of years. Many memories of Rocky, but Rocky, I don't hold him against you. That's a joke. I just want to make a couple of points this evening. Forgot my notes, too. I, I think the number-one thing is, my children are grown, but right now, I have, I have four granddaughters growing up on Warren Creek Road. And one of them, last summer, was threatened by a lady. She was, Quincy was scared, terrified, crying. On the road, we have no idea who she was, but Quincy said she was, she was crazy and aggressive and scary. And we've had a, a number of, of folks in the area that are just, seems like they're, they're on something. And it's, it's just not, Warren Creek Road is just getting to be more and more not the place that it used to be. It's still a great community, but I think I'm asking you to do whatever is necessary to maintain the quality of life there for my four granddaughters. That's number one. Number two, is a personal objective. I, I hope to survive a few more years the travails of traveling Warren Creek Road. The traffic is, is increasing. John, John was not exaggerating when he said 800 cars on a, on a busy Saturday. And granted, the main reason for that jump, a number of years ago, is that the, the Water District opened it up to a disc, disc course, and just a lot of young people come out. But I, I ask you to really consider what you can do to, to help maintain our community safe, clean. You know, Rocky and every one of us have a right to, to, to deal with our property as we choose, but, you know, it's going to be a challenge with something like a cannabis grow, it seems to me. Thanks.
My name is Quincy Collins, and I've lived on this road ever since I was a little baby, which isn't that long compared to all these people.
Just move up to it.
Right here? Okay. I live on Warren Creek one, Road 1002. That was my grandfather who just spoke. And I want to thank you all for being here. Last year, I had an incident with a lady who told me she lived at this, this grow site that is up to trial right now. It was reported to the Highway Patrol. This lady had threatened me and my friend's life. I was very scared at the time. I didn't really know what to do. I've been scared to walk on this road ever since. And I have, I actually have a neighbor that goes to my school, and I walk on the road to see him every day. It's just really, like, nerve-wracking for me. Every car that passes by, I look at it, and I'm wondering who it is. I love my road. I love walking on it. I love playing with my three-year-old sisters. It's honestly, like, the summer is pretty much just walking on that road, going down to the river. And I must say that I shouldn't have done what I did, but that lady acted very irresponsibly and aggressive, and it, it made me really scared. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Colby Collins, and I would just like to say that I grew, I have been growing up on Warren Creek Road, and I really love it. It's a very nice community, and I, I've had so many great memories, and it's just a really nice road, and I even learned to ride my bike on that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Tom Smith. I'm a resident of Warren Creek Road, and I've been asked to read this letter from a neighbor who wishes to remain anonymous because he's afraid of retaliation. "To whom it may concern, while driving on Warren Creek Road at dusk, I saw a large fire on a hillside on the Costa property near dwellings and forest. Given the past two structural fires, one in 2005 and one in 2011 at the same location, I was extremely concerned that there was potential serious danger to lives and property. I drove down that section of Warren Creek Road, through the Costa property, parked, and stepped out of my car. As I exited my vehicle, a woman came out from behind or within a structure. She was holding either a shotgun or a rifle. I was at a distance, and it was dusk, so it was hard to determine what kind of weapon it was. I called out, asking if they were okay and needed help. At this point, I could see the fire was one of brush and trash, did not appear to be traveling up the hillside or consuming any structures. I was concerned no one was supervising the fire. The woman came around the building at some distance, not in the line of sight of the fire, and when I asked if she needed any help and if she was okay, she walked toward me, brandishing the weapon over her head. At this point, I was afraid for my own safety. I repeated my intention is only to help, and she again waved her weapon toward me in a threatening manner. I quickly got back in my vehicle and backed down the road and exited that section of Warren Creek Road. I then returned to the main part of the road, a good safe distance away, and called 911 Emergency Services, reported the fire and the incident. The dispatcher seemed mostly interested in whether there was an immediate threat of danger or danger, which was not the case, since I was off the property and the fire appeared to be contained. The dispatcher indicated the situation was considered non-urgent. I never heard if law enforcement or the Fire Department followed up. As stated earlier, given the number of threats made to local residents, I'm choosing to remain anonymous for safety reasons. Thank you."
Thank you, Speaker.
Hello. My name is Alice Weberg, excuse me, and I live, or was raised on 1712 Warren Creek Road. I still live on Warren Creek Road, and I've raised my children there. For me, it has been a very unique, safe, beautiful, lovely, TV-less world. I really, as a person in recovery, that is hoping to be a recovery coach real soon and help people in a mental health facility, would say that this cannabis grow is also a very unsafe place for people that are trying to live a healthy lifestyle. The smell, the people, the greed, everything else that happens, not only impacts human nature, but also wildlife. There's going to be many, much more impact of soil compression and of change ecosystem that is so precious. We forget that this road has not been changed for, I don't know, I'm not very good with numbers, but over the many years that I've lived there, and that's, what, about 50? So, 55. I'm not good with numbers, but I am good with nature. I know that the organic farms that have been there, I've worked for it, and we had very low impact. Most, everybody either walked or car pulled or rode their bike to work. The impact of the road turnouts, increased traffic, and large equipment will disrupt the road and effectively, and absolutely cause pollution, air, and land, water, and unsafe threats to our ecosystem. I'm here to voice the voice of the critters that are going to be affected by this. We have salamanders, insect, bird, raptors, fish, river otters, foxes, porcupines, possums, just to name a few. There is already a declining drastic effect on the ecosystem by man's changing and rearranging our fragile environment. Thank you for listening. I know that I am very concerned about the watchful guards and about what kind of people it might bring. The cannabis grow up the road that is a larger grow has a 24-hour guard system in place that gravely affects many people, their ability to live a free life in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
My name is Kathleen Zepigno. My husband and I have lived on Warren Creek Road for over 22 years. I am opposed to this permit primarily for the long-term detrimental damage it will have on our community. It will not only jeopardize our safety, but will alter how we live our daily lives. The land proposed for this cannabis grow is within our neighborhood. Over the years, there have been many unsettling incidents on this property. The overall mindset of tenants has been one of intimidation and a tendency to banish outsiders. People would come and go, but the prevailing problems have persisted. I will share two examples with you. When Rocky had his illegal grow a couple of years ago, we hired a Humboldt State College student to help us with gardening. When driving out to our home, he accidentally, accidentally went down Rocky's road. He was confronted by an antagonistic individual who expressed angry threats and vile racial slurs. When the young man related this experience to my husband and I, he was visibly shaken and afraid. He did not want us to call the sheriff. Unfortunately, he never returned because of this episode. About two months later, our friends had a similar encounter. Same mistake, wrong turn. They, too, were met by a person who displayed erratic behavior in the form of insults and verbal abuse. To say the least, living close to this environment for many years has been a major challenge to our community. This has also left many residents with a guarded view of what will come next. Due to the past history of dangerous episodes and the decisions the Costa family have made in choosing irresponsible individuals to live on their property, I think this permit and the rest of our community wants it denied. Thank you.
My name is Myrna Weberg. Our family has lived at 1712 Warren Creek Road for 21 years. My concerns regarding this permit... Okay. My concerns are odor, disregard for private property, and for community safety. The plan submitted January 23rd went to great lengths to describe the usual westernly wind flow pattern. This reinforces my concern that the odor will negatively impact the enjoyment of our 20-acre property at 1800 Warren Creek Road. As a grow, will be due west of our property. The question was asked why we didn't complain about the odor from previous grows. The simple answer is to compare two cows versus 20 cows on a five-acre parcel. Two cows can be overlooked or tolerated, whereas 200 cows would be harder to ignore or tolerate, especially when the wind blows. The size of the grow matters. The plan states that they want to be good neighbors and good stewards of the land. Laura Costa states that she attempted to reach out to me via email at Elizabeth Marino's recommendation, but received no response. I did not see, nor can I I did not see nor can I find an email from Laura. However, there have been deliberate removal of boards from our fence on two occasions without any reason. There are numerous black plastic bags containing spent pot soil from a previous grow left to rot against another section of our fence. The black plastic has degraded from exposure in the soil and torn plastic has filled the setback space that was allowed when the fence was built. This is neither good stewardship nor the actions of good neighbors. We have good neighbors and friends whom we share the use of our land and access to the Mad River. They have a key to unlock our gate so that they can use the trails on our hill as well as the trail down to the river. Last but not least, safety. I am very concerned regarding the personal safety of myself and others in our rural location. I am afraid that a large cannabis grow surrounded by a six-foot fence with lights and cameras will not discourage illegal activity, but will attract persons with criminal intentions. This grow will be visible and accessible from the road, but more covertly from the river. In the summer, when the plants will be most desirable, the river bar is crisscrossed by vehicles, by vehicle trails that are seldom patrolled. Our safety, whether in our homes or on our land, will be a constant source of concern. To our family, our friends, our neighbors, if this plan is approved, please make the right choice. Put safety and community first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Susan Smith. I live...
Bring the microphone. There you go.
My name is Susan Smith. I live on Warren Creek Road. And I am reading this letter for another neighbor who is out of town. First, I would like to say how blessed I feel for my family to be members of the Warren Creek Community. This community is unlike any other I have ever lived in. For me, it is such a special place. We are a community of many different occupations and ages, yet we all live harmoniously, with the exception of the Costas property. If I have a problem, I know I can call on my neighbors to help me, and I would help them. Our road is a small, private road where I'm able to walk with my children without fear. I let my three-year-old run in front of me, feeling confident that the members of our road drive safely. I have dreams of my children being able to grow up walking, running, and riding bikes with the neighborhood kids on our country road. In the spring of 2016, I was weeks away from giving birth to my first daughter. I was in my garden when a massive intimidating pit bull came running onto my property, followed by a very large tattooed man screaming at his dog. Then he started screaming at me to catch his dog. Even though I was very scared and intimidated, I grabbed the dog by the collar. The man continued to scream at me, and the dog broke loose. This increased my fear for me and my unborn child. The dog continued to run around my house and garage with the owner screaming for about 10 minutes. This same man and a woman would drive their car at very high speeds up and down the road, screaming and fighting with each other at all hours, day and night. I witnessed the sheriff going to their property multiple times. This past June, we had goats show up on our property a couple of times and could not find who the owners were. We later learned that the Costas had allowed someone to tether the goats on their property. I was driving out of my driveway and saw a man, a woman, and Robin Costa enter my neighbor's yard. The tall guy was screaming at my neighbors that they must have let the goats loose, and he was never going to pay for any damages. Turns out that the goats had entered the house and broke my neighbor's front room window trying to get out. He kept yelling and making intimidating physical body gestures as I drove past. Another important issue is one of the traffic turnouts proposed for the road. One is on the land I am leasing from Lyle Schmidt. I have already invested time, energy, and money into seeding and organic cover crop, fencing, and gates. Disruption to this space would be an unfair burden on my family as well as Lyle Schmidt, property owner. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Carla Gentoli. I'm just going to read what I have, even though you've heard some of this. I've lived at 1264 Warren Creek Road for 29 years. Our house sits about 100 feet above the farm, giving us a view of the farm, the road through it, surrounding fields, including part of the Costa property, the Blue Lake Casino, Highway 299, and Blue Lake, et cetera. There's little sound barriers, so we hear the freeway, outdoor casino events, even the phone ringing at the gravel plant, all on the far side of the river. On our side of the river, I can hear road noise, dogs barking, any loud yelling, snatches of loud conversations, and so on. Several incidents are on the record involving myself and the Costa property. One was the trailer fire that I spotted from our house. Another was when a neighbor and I both called the sheriff after hearing a woman desperately screaming for help. An official, perhaps two years ago, asked for concerns I had about Costa property, and my comments should be in her records. The placement of a motorhome on the Costa property had six windows that faced my house. I requested the motorhome be repositioned to ease my fears of being watched by them. The casino hotel has only nine windows that face my house. The first time I was made uncomfortable by a Costa tenant was when my name was yelled across the fields from a man I did not know. It was really creepy when I realized he was watching me, could see me, and that I was hearing him call my name. I was on my south deck at the time. This same person would leave his car at various spots in the road for days purportedly because he ran out of gas. Once he left it at the mailboxes, which would be an excuse for him to be at the mailboxes any time of the day or night, and since our mail had been pilfered more than once, I was upset about it. I've enjoyed walking the river bar near our house. About 2015 or 16, Paul and I were walking out there near the Costa place. A large dog confronted us, acting like he was protecting his own property. After a tense standoff, the dog headed toward Costas. I'm always nervous walking there now, and I don't feel safe using Weberg's River Access because it passes through Costas. Two incidents involving dogs caused damage to our property. An orphan calf behind our barn was mortally mauled. The dogs ran toward Costas when scared off. A bent post was not paid for. The lady said she'd been trying to herd her dog when she got stuck in our fence. I asked her to buy a post to replace the damaged one. She agreed, but did not do so. There's a really poor track record at the Costa property, and the closest neighbors are still suffering from the inappropriate behavior of the people and their animals associated with the property. Garbage from previous grows is not cleaned up, so we have little faith that they will be good stewards of the land and our neighborhood. I'm afraid of what type of people and their dogs, guard dogs. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Marcel Weberg Rainey. I currently reside in Miranda. However, I'm a registered nurse, and I commute to, from Southern Humboldt to work in Eureka, and I stay on the family property in the family home three to four days a week. The house is less than 600 feet away from the proposed site. Our other property at 1800 Warren Creek Road borders the proposed site at the east side. And although this area is zoned for agriculture, this is a rural residential area populated primarily by young families, professionals, and retirees. A grow in this area puts our safety, health, and welfare at risk. Over the past 20 years since the Costas purchased the property, there have been numerous incidences, you've heard, with their tenants involving threats to our neighbors, friends, and relatives walking through their easement, which we have allowed, to get to the river and to trails on our property, to the point where these friends of mine, when I offer them, they no longer use that easement because they're afraid. I know somebody who has a controlled carry or concealed carry, he still doesn't want to go down there because of incidents that have occurred there in the past. The applicant lays blame at the feet of other family members, but some of these incidents have been within the period since the beginning of their permit process, leading me to question the veracity of this claim. Prior to his passing, my father had run-ins with other members of the Costa family who tried to intimidate him into moving our easement. More recently, Rocky attempted to intimidate my 80-year-old mother at the last planning meeting. There are members of my family who are not here because they're afraid of retaliation. As mentioned, our fences have been taken down, and our property is now vulnerable to access from both the Warren Creek roadside and the riverside. And if they put a fence up, we can, people can still come through our property and get through our board fences and access or close access to their property. Increased crime in marijuana cultivation is well-known throughout the county, one of the major factors in local drug-related violence. We cannot afford to minimize this because we are a rural community, and we are at the mercy of our local already overburdened Sheriff's Department. And as stated, they don't always come out when we call. I want to mention that I am highly sensitive to odors and suffer from allergies and asthma. If I'm exposed to my water, if I'm exposed for even a short period of time, I have experienced nausea, headaches, and respiratory symptoms, including stuffy nose, sneezing, and coughing. I experience these symptoms merely being in the proximity of people working in cannabis cultivation. It'll be impossible to spend any time on our neighboring property during growing season due to the proximity and odor of the open grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amethyst Weberg, and I'm the granddaughter of Myrna Weberg and my late grandfather, Donald Weberg. I grew up on Warren Creek Road, where my family has resided since 1969. I'm reading a letter on the behalf of our neighbor Kathleen. My name is Kathleen Lee, and my husband and I have lived on Warren Creek Road for almost 43 years. We have heard a lot tonight about a neighborhood community with longtime residents and interconnectedness and mutual support that is unusual these days. It is a fact that cannabis cultivation is legal in California and that the state and county have developed a rather robust permitting process to regulate it. It is also a fact that Mr. Costa, with the help of Ms. Cordini of Asherite Consulting, has developed an application that meets these regulatory requirements. But when it comes to cannabis cultivation in residential communities, there are some factors that cannot be measured, like road width and easements. I would like to address one of these factors: safety. Safety both retrospective and prospective. First, while our community has been close and supportive, there has been one outlier: the property in question. Retrospectively, you have heard from numerous people about multiple incidences of unnecessary, aggressive, and disruptive behavior on the part of tenants and the owner of the property when it was the site of unpermitted grows. It is hardly surprising that there is little trust within the community that the owner and manager will keep the commitments made in the permit application or conduct their activities in a responsible manner. Prospectively, we are concerned of the potential for safety issues with the presence on a commercial cannabis operation. It is often said that growing cannabis is like growing any other crop, but in reality, there's little chance that an armed individual or individuals would try to steal Paul Gentoli's squash or my tomatoes. Moreover, cannabis cultivation is a cash-based operation, and a black market still exists, making unsecure grows a target for theft. As I said previously, a regulatory structure for cannabis has been established. However, the multiple problems that arise from the residential grow operation interface have not. In addition, follow-up enforcement of the existing regulations remains weak and intermittent. Chances are, these issues will be addressed sometime in the near future. We would respectfully ask that the county not allow damage to our community in the meantime. In my own personal closing statement, myself and my husband Sam have future plans to build a home on my family's property. We have tremendous concerns regarding the smell, safety, and overall damage this cannabis operation will force upon our road and community. And myself, growing up on the road, I want Quincy and Colby to have the same opportunity to walk down this road and to feel safe and to go down to the river, down to our property, where they are very welcome, and to feel like this is our special, our special community. And it is not just a neighborhood, we're a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Mulder, CEO, Humboldt Redwood Healing. I'm going to give my thoughts here, being as I'm not going to be able to talk on what I actually came here for. I've heard a lot of things tonight, things to think about: property rights, right-ofways. If these road improvements need to be done, every, all the landowners, if all those things are placed and there's actually a legal right-ofway, that's the partial owner's right to do that. You know, they can legally do that. Some of those, that road evaluation I seen, though, heck, it would be good for the environment to get it fixed. I mean, I don't know what portion was county and what portion was private. Just some things to think about. But road improvements, I personally just did a large improvement of a bunch of fire turnouts and stuff like that because I was under the belief it needed to be done. I spent over 50 grand on it. So, if somebody has, they have to have the means to be able to do that. If they're going to say they're going to fix the road, outdoor crops, I haven't been paid for 2019 season. I'm still owed a lot of money. So, the reality, if you approve this, the reality of the work wouldn't happen for at least 12, 16 months. I did hear something about commercial activity as far as farms in that area. So, back to my statements I made earlier, as far as commercial activity in the same area, something to think about. I'm honestly not for or against the project. I'm just trying to bring up some things that if I was sitting in your seat, things that would have to be thought about. I did hear a lot about a recreational right-ofway, though. That right-ofway that goes through the subject partial. It sounds, from what I was hearing, that's recreational use. So, that's something to be considered possibly in your ordinance, because that's from what I heard is that family landowners let the neighborhood go through that property to recreate down at the river. I'd like to squash, it's not dangerous for children, it's dangerous if you have dangerous people involving it. My son's nine years old. I've been doing this legal thing for five years. I'm upfront and honest with him about everything I do. He can't go in the cultivation area anymore because that's against state law, but when we were a nonprofit corporation, he had, inside our nursery, he would dig up and grow trees, and we'd plant them out in the forest. But that's no longer legal. I'd just like to squash that. This is a tough one, and this is why I heard at some points in time when people are saying it shouldn't be in rural residential, but also this is zoned ag. So, it's a tough one. You have a tough decision, and I don't even know if you're going to get there tonight. I wish you luck.
Thank you.
I will be fast. My name is Thomas Edrington. I am a local cannabis strategist, activist, general policy wonk, and I am here in support of the Costas farm. You've seen my letter of support. My original intention was just to reiterate that and then sit down, but I have to respond to some things. So, I have never heard a group of people argue so passionately for a damaging status quo that weren't Republican senators. The troubles on this parcel, the road, all of those things, the entire point of the regulation of cannabis in Humboldt County was to address these issues. The process by which those things can be addressed are through permitted regulation. There are no tenants on a permitted, regulated farm. There are no breaches of security. There are no breaches in the fence. There are no people wandering up and down the road because they're all on the security Been a moment since I checked their security plan, but I assume recording equipment. So, all of these things that are troubling, and from what I've heard, there's a lot of troubling things about this neighborhood. One thing that has not been reiterated nearly at all is that Robin Costa has been in control of that property for the entirety of the time that these complaints are coming up. Rocky Costa wants to come in and improve this parcel. He's already done so by, at his own cost, wiping out a whole bunch of squatters. All those people who've been causing your problems, Rocky has already moved them out at cost to him. So, the process by which these problems get addressed is the process of permitting a cannabis farm. If it doesn't get approved, how are any of these issues in this neighborhood going to get addressed? They're not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker. Is there anybody else that wants to come up and speak on this? Would the applicant like to come up and speak? Please keep it down.
Hi, I'm Cara Cordoni, I'm here as an agent for Rocky Costa, and I'm a little disoriented by the comment that just made, so give me a moment because I haven't been out to or engaged with anybody on the farm, so I find that a little confusing. So, I wanted to address a question that you brought up earlier about the employees on the farm, so the intention is that it is a family farm that would, during peak seasons, outsource employment that may count also as employees. I may have misspoken on that, but the intention is that it is Rocky and his son that are, as a family, taking care of this farm, and that when we needed additional labor, as opposed to hiring people and having them on our staff and having regular support, we would use employment agencies like Emerald Employment, Dark Staffing, to bring out that required staff with a limited impact on the road. I see you look confused, so I wanna...
I guess I'm confused because the point of my question related to traffic, so whether they're outsourced or contracted or actual employees, you're still planning on having bodies come out to the site to help harvest, correct?
Absolutely, and so we talked about in the response having up to four people and that they would be carpooling, so we would maximize the ability to bring people out without impacting the land. So, in the Green Road Consulting Plan and in our cultivation plan, we did say that we would have two to four road trips, and that that would be increased during the time of building the farm and during the peak time of harvesting and planting. So, there would be that impact on the road, which would be the case should we choose to pursue any other kind of cultivation on this land, which as an agricultural piece of land, we would pursue should we get denied here to improve that land and take advantage of prime agricultural land. So, one of the other things that I had put this in the supplement is, you know, a lot of people have been concerned with Green Road Consulting's report, and myself, the Costa's, we are not engineers, we really rely on the expertise of legitimate businesses in the community, and so we engaged with them to provide a road report. Public Works did come out and address concerns with that report and made their own findings to which we're happy to comply. So, I just wanted to be clear about that. About the road in addition, it's interesting, they said there is no road association and yet multiple people did refer to pooling funds and taking care of the road as a community, which I think, without calling it a road association, is de facto a road association. We have reached out about participating at different points and clearly there's been intense challenges with communication, but our intention is to improve the road regardless of what cultivation went on at the end of that road. There are clearly issues and wanting to have a homesteading, family farm, ultimately with a house where people would live, the intention is to maintain, collaborate, improve, participate in what sounds like a very close-knit and supportive community. Our intention is no way to detract from that. Regarding the turnouts, you know, the survey work and to work with the landowners, absolutely. We hear those concerns and we want to be as sensitive as possible while meeting the requests of the Public Works Department. And regarding the safety on site, you know, as a legal permitted farm with oversight, with regular reporting, with the ability of the neighbors to call with concerns and have people come out and inspect the farm, that, you know, many of these issues will no longer be an issue, that that is part of becoming a legal farm under compliance. And, you know, it would seem that many of the fears and concerns are really based in something other than reality, that there's the ideas around crime, that all of that is moving into a positive place, not going backwards. So, I'm open to any questions, concerns, feedback.
Any questions for the applicant? No, you had your chance. I don't believe so. Would, is Mr. Costa wanna speak?
I'm Rocky Costa, and I am a family man. I'm raising my five-year-old granddaughter right now. I've had custody since she was born, and we take her to school, we do everything. We've lived in Blue Lake all our lives. We go every month to breakfast out at Blue Lake Range. I don't think I've seen any of you guys out there. I've been doing it for 50 years. I, you know, I don't live out there...
Please address the commission.
But I don't live out there, so I don't go to their 4th of July things. If I did, I might, I've had other things I go and do. So, and we've gotten rid of the scumbags, that's what I would call them, and, you know, and we're gonna do our dry farm organically. I know Paul might have a little bit of thought that I don't know how to do it, but I do, I've been in touch with Sunshine Johnson and Crystal Ortiz down in Holmes Flat, and they've helped me out a little bit, and my son's into it, and, you know, we just wanna have, be able to go out there and have a farm, just like any other farmer. And there is a right to grow, so, thank you guys, and hopefully we get this approved.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant while we've got them up there? See you now.
And one other thing is, you know, they've talked about some of the stuff on the property. I cannot do anything on my property as instructed from the county. Since I put in my permit, they said I can't do anything out there, you know? So, I haven't went out there and removed anything, so, you know, after this gets done and I'm get okay, everything's gonna be cleaned up and I'll start all of my process.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Newman?
I have a question regarding those turnouts and stuff that are gonna be required if it is approved. Have you gotten an estimate of how much those all will cost you?
No, I haven't. I just, I had a hard time wanting to spend a whole bunch of money on this if I'm getting to be turned down, you know? I mean, you don't go out and just throw your money out in the wind and watch it blow away. I mean, you know, I'm...
I was just asking for an estimate, if you had any idea how it's gonna cost you.
No, my brother is, my brother works for wall construction, he's worked for SGAAS for 25 years. He's more than qualified to do this, and I've got other people, I can get gravel delivered, you know, I've lived around here, my dad owned the Costa Trucking just right down the road.
Noah, did you have a question? Well, it was just following up on something you said at the end there, that you were not allowed to clean up any debris or any, I mean, I understand that while the permit is in process, you're not allowed to undertake...
Drastic.
...any cultivation or construction related to that, but I just wanted to be clear that what I, what I thought you were responding to is people saying there's a lot of stuff, debris, garbage, and things lying around from years ago, and I, were you suggesting that you're not allowed to remove that?
No, I, no. Some of the debris they were talking about, there's brand-new greenhouses out there that I had gotten ordered when I first put in my permit, and then they told me, well, you can't do it after I, you know, I mean, they've been sitting out there for three years, four years.
I see, because those are materials that will be used to construct.
Well, I was going to.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then, and then we've changed our mind and talked to Crystal Ortiz down in Holmes Flat, and, you know, we decided to do the dry farm. It's against, you know, the, you know, you can dry farm there and it's not costing you a bunch of money for somebody to water.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's a more feasible way to farm.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Melanie?
Yeah, so the, somebody mentioned something like 800 cars a day on a Saturday.
I wouldn't doubt it. I mean, you know, and I would say that probably half of them that are going out are half intoxicated, and that's because of the disc golf.
Okay, so...
Okay, I mean, there's not 800 going down that way.
Right.
I mean, they, they did put a counter up there somewhere by the trussel, I don't know exactly where he put it, okay? I mean, that's my, not my job, that's theirs and the county. And then they put one down lower on the thing, on the road, down next to where it turns to gravel, okay? And then there was like 200 or something all the way down to there, and then there was, you know, like 24 that went down the gravel road, down the last part of the gravel road before the garden.
Okay, but your plan is to adhere to the, what you've proposed in terms of trips and consolidating trips into fewer trips like you can do with Amazon, so on?
Yeah, yeah, and I drive slow. I mean, I was out there the other day, and I got passed by one of the people that owned land out there, you know? I don't drive fast. My brother don't drive fast. So, I mean, there's been, he's had tenants out there that drove bad.
So, most of what we've been hearing then from public comment is due to the illegal nature of previous activities rather than the legal grow proposed.
Yes, ma'am.
The dogs, the goats, I have goats, and they're rascals.
Oh, I, no, actually, the goat, isn't that what you just said?
Yeah.
Okay. My son's ex-girlfriend brought a goat out there and put it out there so it could eat some stuff. It was, had a clip on it, and the clip was undone. There was two of them, and both of them were done, done. And Paul Gentoli's worker was with her. That was the guy that yelled at somebody, I don't know who she, who they yelled, who he yelled at, but that was one of Paul Gentoli's workers that was with her because he's, because his ex-girlfriend does farm work, and she was helping him on a farm in, down in Arcade of Bottoms.
But I see you have plans for fencing, and so would that be the type of fencing that would contain any animals that you plan to...
And a fence would be there, there would be a road with full access across it, not gated at all, they would be able to walk through there.
Okay.
You know, I mean, because you guys, it's gotta be stripped off, and the reason I have to move it is because if that road's over there, I've gotta be 30 feet from the road. You know, well, that puts me up in the trees almost, you know? So, and it should be over in the access where it's a deeded right-of-way, it should be over there, so.
Okay.
I should be able to use my land, or my brother's land.
And then, on the chemical fertilizer chemicals argument, I assume that most people trying to grow cannabis, you're not going to be doing that because you are pretty much forced to be organic, which is a far stricter standard than the USDA organic.
It'll be some kind of compost, organic compost, so...
That's really all the questions that I had for you that I think are answerable. I do have some confusion still surrounding the road, and I'm not sure if maybe staff is best to answer...
I'd like to, I'd like to address...
Questions for the applicant, this is the time, we will discuss and ask.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you have the answers for the road, or maybe Mike wants to weigh in with the questions.
So, all of the people have complained about the road being too narrow, it's that, you know, a car drive down it, you know, they have to step off the side of the road completely. Well, they've gotta do that now, so it should be widened a little bit, so it is safe for the children. I understand that. I have a child, you know, I've raised three myself, and I've got a grandchild that I'm raising now, so, and I don't know any, you know, I can't say I don't know any bad marijuana growers or cannabis growers because there's been some bad people, but we try and associate with all the good people.
Yeah, anything of value, avocados, criminal behavior, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, hold on, I had two more little bits there that you kinda alluded to a little bit there with my colleague about the right-of-way road, and I wanted to hear exactly what you were saying, I wanted to make sure I was hearing it correctly. So, that right-of-way will be moved over to the side and there will be fencing up there, and there will be no gate to...
Right.
...keep people from going through that right-of-way, so...
Yeah, the neighbors can still walk through to, Weber's will still be able to walk through. They don't have to get out and open any gates. I mean, I would love to have all of my property fenced off. I mean, since this whole thing, you know, I bought in some greenhouses and stuff and a bunch of stuff got into stolen. My brother's been staying out there once in a while on the property because I had some theft, so...
So, you see right up there?
So, I would move it to the top of, to the top of that screen, I would move the road up to there.
Okay, and that would then allow the neighbors and the Weber's to go through?
Yep, and I would have a fence.
And after that, is that where the gate might be?
Yeah, yeah, they have, they have a gate over here at this side of it.
Yeah.
Is where their gate is. I don't have, we don't have a gate, so people can just come in our place and steal whatever they want.
But you'll have a fence then when this is permitted?
I will have all of, everything that I am using gated off...
All right.
As proposed by, you know, the state laws and everything else.
So, my other question is regarding organic farming. Is there a standard for organic farming for cannabis?
Pretty much, yes.
So, you've investigated that, and that will be instituted?
Yep, yeah, all sprays for bugs and stuff is all organic, whether you're using a neem oil or garlic oil or clove oil or something like that to spray on for bugs, it does not hurt anything.
Is that part of the conditions in here that you know of, that it has to be organic?
I don't think it's a part of a condition. It's just what I'm gonna do. I mean, I'm into, you know, my wife's got cancer, she's on her way home right now from going down and getting, having cancer last week, or surgery last week. She's been, already did double mastectomy last May.
All right.
So, you know, she uses it medically.
All right.
I got lots of other friends that do. I don't know if you've read any of our, my, letters from my friends, but...
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the applicant? If not?
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna bring this back to the commission. Anybody have any questions for staff or any clarification?
So, I wanted to follow back up about the comments about the employees. It sounded like the agent for the applicant contradicted what I heard you say, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear. Are there going to, are we counting the vehicle trips for outsourced employees, as they called it, as well as the fact that the owners don't appear to live on-site? Are all those vehicle trips counted in the road and traffic studies that were done?
When the road evaluation was completed, Mr. Rocky had proposed four employees. So, when I let them know that they need to have a commercial facility, ADA restroom, then, then they condensed down to no employees, and less, and so that will reduce the number of trips. And so, I confirmed with Cliff Johnson here, supervisor, contractors are not considered employees, is that correct? They're employees? Okay, then, I'm not sure.
But they just said they were going to have employees, so they don't have the facilities that are required to have employees?
No.
Okay, and...
Could I ask for a clarification? What facilities are you talking about?
Well, she just mentioned ADA bathrooms.
Commercial facility.
So, for cultivation, ADA bathrooms are not required. For cultivation, ADA bathrooms are not required. ADA bathrooms are required when you get into commercial processing and, and other kinds of activities other than cultivation.
Okay, I must have misheard her. I thought she said that they were, there were ADA facilities required with employees.
For commercial, like, for processing on-site. So the original plan was to process on-site. They proposed four employees. They changed their plan after the fact. They, they did a road evaluation.
So the road evaluation includes how many vehicle trips for the employees?
If I could try to just interpret what I, I heard Ms. Moreno say.
Okay.
Is that the road evaluation originally assumed four employees. And there was consideration within that of doing processing on-site, but when the ADA bathroom issue was identified relative to the processing, they removed the processing from the application. So now we're just down to onsite cultivation, off-site processing.
So if I hear you correctly, you're saying they evaluated under a more rigorous set of vehicle trips, and they've since backed it off of it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
No?
Well, okay, so, and this is related to that issue of how much real traffic increase this project as presently conceived would entail. I, I have, I, um, there's a number of ways in which, in which this project troubles me, but one of them is that, although I'm not sure that this is the, the main reason or the source of the, um, widespread opposition from the community and neighbors that we've heard, but it's, it's, it's paradoxical that I think part of what has aggrieved the neighbors is that we are requiring, um, a, a parcel that's, from what I understand, not actually going to generate a whole lot more traffic along this road, but due to the strict requirements of our ordinance, nevertheless, it will require all these improvements, improvements that while technically may be improvements, are burdening and angering and upsetting the neighbors. Um, I mean, I, I think the neighbors know it's not, it's not the applicant who wants to move your fence to put in the pullout or the turnaround. It's, it's our ordinance that requires it due to the nature of activity that he's seeking to do. And I, I think those, those requirements are there for a reason in the ordinance, but I just wonder, Director Ford, Mr. Johnson, County Council, anyone, you know, is there any leeway in a situation like this? And again, I'm not at all presuming that this is the only problem with this project, or the only reason the neighbors don't like it, but, but where we find that, if we were to find that the actual traffic impacts or increase due to a project are likely to be fairly limited due to the overall volume of traffic, you know, do we have it, the discretion to, to waive those requirements about putting in pullouts, widening, and so forth?
So I'm gonna ask Mr. Bronckel to give you the technical answer.
Okay.
The larger answer is that what we basically ask for is to determine whether or not the road has the capacity and the safety to allow the additional trips. And, and so that's really what it's about.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bob Bronckel, Public Works Department. So as I begin to answer the question that's being posed, I want to first start with the trip generation estimates that Green Road Consulting came up with, and that's on page two of their report. And what they did do is they looked at, uh, two different cannabis projects that are being proposed out in this area, one of which being the project being heard tonight, and looking at both projects, the cumulative impact is estimated to be twenty-six additional vehicle trips per day. That's the, the net increase in traffic that they're estimating this project is gonna go ahead and add to the road. The, the issue with many, many projects that the commission hears over time, whether it's a cannabis project or a subdivision project, is adding more traffic onto roads that do not have an appropriate functional classification to it, creates conflict in traffic being able to come and go, that the roads aren't wide enough. What you've heard tonight are two things. One, there's concerns of the public that the road is narrow, that it does need to be widened, and you're also hearing from the fronting landowners who have encroached within those right-of-ways that have been set aside for the road, that they would have to go ahead and remove their encroachments from the right-of-way, perhaps, to allow these turnouts to be constructed. In many instances, where Public Works had looked at where turnouts would be proposed, they could be constructed without the need to move fences. Other locations, the use of simply being occupied by vehicles or supplies being stacked near roads. So there are opportunities where these turnouts can be added without significantly requiring fences to be moved or other improvements to be made. The, the challenge is understanding the nature of what is the neighborhood really trying to achieve with their concerns about road safety. Is it maintaining the narrowness of the road and preserving the encroachments that everyone else has along the road, or is it to go ahead and add the turnouts to improve the functional classification of the road? Along this road, in the county maintained portion, the county has a forty-foot wide right-of-way. At that point, it then transitions to a fifty-foot right-of-way for the, the balance of the road. So that's a substantial right-of-way in which it's extremely narrow road constructed at this time.
Well, and thank you, and just on that last point, you talked about the, the county maintained portion has a forty-foot right-of-way. Beyond that, you mean on the privately maintained, non-county maintained portion, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's where you're, that's where you're saying the, um, further-in landowners have that fifty-foot right-of-way? Is that the right-of-way you're referring to?
Correct. The first mile or so of the road is county maintained. The balance is not county maintained, and there are various easements that the landowners along there have over each of those property to allow them access in and out of the, uh, project along the road.
And just because I, one person brought it up, so I thought it's worth airing out, that is a portion of the road that the county doesn't maintain, but nevertheless, the ordinance and its requirements about category four or equivalent standards apply on that privately owned, privately maintained road.
That's correct. The purpose of the standards is to, to ensure that roads are adequate to serve the intended land uses that they're serving.
Yes. Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Mellon.
Yes, when, when you did that cumulative assessment, was that based on the previous proposal that estimated the trips to be two to four, or was that based on the current proposal, which is to have fewer?
The Green Roads Consulting report is based upon a maximum of four seasonal employees.
Okay.
Stating that one of which will live on-site, and then there'll be- Let me do the whole sentence. Aside from the initial traffic increases during the construction phase, commercial traffic associated with the farm should average four vehicle trips per day with up to eight vehicle trips per day during the harvest period. This traffic should be composed of small passenger vehicles, such as pickup trucks and sedans, and additionally, two to four trips can be expected per week for deliveries, some of which may necessitate larger transport vehicles.
So now that we're looking at a proposal that's solely for, um, growing and not for the processing of cannabis, we're looking at zero to two, if we just do the math there. So how does that change what you came up with in terms of your cumulative analysis?
The cumulative analysis was performed by others, not by the Public Works Department. Public Works-
Or your comments on, on-
Public Works did an assessment of the road based upon all the land uses being out there, and based upon the current functional capacity of the road, and it's our standing that the road, as it is right now with what's going on, not including any proposed use on the subject property, is deficient and does need these turnouts to, to function in a better manner to serve the entire community. Regardless if you have a project or not, Public Works would still be recommending various turnouts along the road to improve safety and functional capacity.
I see, so for the, your comment as Public Works Department is just that it's immaterial because we're already below, um, where it should be?
Mellon?
Thank you.
Oh, are you done? I was just gonna hinge off of what you were asking, um, right now, because there was one more sentence there in this report that you didn't read, that I wanted to double-check with what we had heard just a little bit ago about, about twenty-six vehicle trips, but that last sentence says therefore a maximum, daily maximum of twelve vehicle trips can be associated with this project in that paragraph.
And that, that dovetails in with the total, when you essentially double that, you get twenty-four, and the next, the bottom paragraph on that page is where they said this brings a total traffic increase with two cannabis projects, one of which being the subject project tonight, to twenty-six vehicles, uh, per day.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So I, one of the comments that the public made that bothered me was that they, a property owner had, had tried to build a secondary dwelling unit, and they were told that the road didn't meet the functional capacity in order to do that. Another commenter said that she'd really like to build a, a dwelling unit on a family parcel. So my question is if these improvements were made, these, these turnouts, one, would it make the road safer? And two, would it allow these other, uh, comments to be, or allow others to use the road for secondary dwelling units and potentially new dwelling units?
Okay, let's first deal with vacant property. Where there is vacant property, there is the ability to go ahead and apply for a principally permitted structure without the need to look at whatever the condition of the road is, and that's a principally permitted use. You apply for your building permit, and, and that's the end of it. The secondary dwelling units, the standards many years ago were a little bit more stringent in making sure that roads weren't overburdened. What has transpired over the years, in California, there's a housing crisis that everyone's aware of, and as a result of the housing crisis, the state has mandated loosening the restrictions on secondary dwelling units, and, uh, I'm sure Director Ford will chime in if I, uh, misquote this, but essentially now, secondary dwelling units are almost to the point of being principally permitted in that there's very limited, uh, requirements to go along with them, other than just ensuring that if the county road's paved, that there's a paved driveway going to it.
Is it fair to say that if this project doesn't put in these improvements, that there could be additional increases in traffic due to the reasons that you mentioned, principally and now potentially quasi-principally permitted secondary dwelling units?
Correct. So as there's, whatever vacant properties there are out there, at such time in the future, when those owners choose to develop their property for a single-family home or some sort of farmstead, there will be increased traffic from those uses with the lessening of the secondary dwelling standards. As owners along the road choose to construct secondary dwelling units, that in turn will also increase traffic along the road. So those are the sorts of things that will be happening over time as owners choose to exercise their rights and develop their properties as, as they fit.
So I've been letting everybody else chime in. This one hits the issues that I've had with the cannabis ordinance all along, so since we have you up here, Mr. Bronckel, I'm gonna ask, you basically stole my thunder, but, um, there's some irony in this, that being in the development business, it's not the same standards that the cannabis people have to face as, if, if the, the young lady who said she wants to build her dream house there eventually, she's not gonna be able to come before us and say, "I'd like to fill out the equivalent of a road class four form." She's gonna be told by Public Works that she has to build that road to a class four standard. And there's a, a big difference there. Um, I think it's that we need to be real clear on what we're saying. Cannabis gets a really good deal, and it's really ironic that somebody that lives out there and plans to, to build their dream house won't have the same, um, luxury afforded them to do just some turnouts and such. I'd like, I'd love to hear your view on that.
Well, in the case of the vacant property at the end of the road, where the app, or not the applicant, the, uh, landowner was discussing their future dream of development on that property, because it's vacant property and they're applying for their principally permitted home on there, there is no road improvement requirements for that property. They simply walk into the planning and building and apply for the permit, get their permit.
There'd be no improvements to that road?
It's not a subdivision, it's an existing legal lot. It's vacant.
Whoever that young lady was, go in tomorrow and apply for the permit. You heard it here.
But just to follow up on that, what about an accessory dwelling unit? And of course, I know we were going to talk about a new ordinance for that, that we're not gonna get to tonight, but under the law now, just to follow up on Commissioner Bongio's point, um, would, would somebody who wanted to do, uh, an accessory dwelling unit have to build a category four road versus category four equivalent?
No. The improvements, there's two portions of this road. One's county maintained, and the other portion is non-county maintained. So if you're on the non-county maintained portion, it's non-paved, there is, would be no requirements for that development. If you're off the county maintained portion, and your existing driveway was a non-surface driveway, meaning it's a gravel driveway, the only requirement for your permit would be to pave the driveway twenty-five feet back from the county road to protect the, uh, surface of the county road from gravel being kicked out onto it. That would be the only roadway-type improvement that would be required for the project, and that's not even on the roadway, that's the driveway itself.
Okay, thanks.
So I have a question for staff regarding, um, the zoning in the, um, Blue Lake Community Planning Area. Has this been gone through yet, um, on the Blue Lake Planning, um, area about zoning and possible zone changes?
Uh, no, we, um, we're going to, uh, get to the, uh, Blue Lake Planning Area, but we, we're still in McKinleyville right now, working on the town center.
The reason I'm asking that is because of the neighbors, um, you know, we've heard from multiple ones here, and, and, it seems that area has become more of a residential area than agricultural, uh, without me looking at any maps at all with the zoning and stuff, but, um, we wrestled with this last year, if I recall, about- The reason I'm asking that is because of the neighbors, you know, we've heard from multiple ones here, and, and it seems that area has become more of a residential area than agricultural, without me looking at any maps at all with the zoning and stuff, but we wrestled with this last year, if I recall, about zoning and stuff in some of these areas that have residential area that has grown up into these ag areas. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Well, I'm looking at the clock and we're running out of time. I'm hoping that we can wrap this one up tonight, and we're obviously not gonna get to the other, but is there any other questions, or could we get to the point where we're gonna have a motion? Anyone?
Well, sure. This, this is a tough one, because there, there's a conflation of concerns here. And I, I first want to acknowledge that, that this was a fairly singular turnout by a neighborhood, which is clearly very special. You know, I've ridden my bike out there many times as far as where it says private, I don't go onto the private part, but I, I love Warren Creek Road, it's, it's gorgeous. And clearly, you all have a special community. Now, I personally bristle when I hear it implied that all of those wholesome, family-friendly community values are threatened by cannabis per se. I'm not a cannabis grower, but I have lived near, interacted with many very neighborly, friendly, responsible, generous, community-minded, small-scale family growers. And so I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a characterization that really rubs me the wrong way, because it does seem that, that there is a burden being placed on or prejudice against one crop that wouldn't be applied to any others. That said, I don't think this is so much about the, the cannabis itself, or I would like to think it is not so much about somebody that you knew and liked and trusted going through the cannabis permitting process as it is about a history of bad blood, bad faith, threats, violence, poor land management choices made on behalf of this property. I understand that this guy, the, the current applicant was not really in charge of the property for most of that time, but some of that time, it's a little bit fuzzy where that responsibility took over. You know, in cases where there is already a lot of community opposition and already problems or borderline problems trying to meet the requirements of the ordinance or consequent side effects of having to meet it that would, that would have disadvantages on other property owners, I, I think it's, it's appropriate to consider the historical context, for me. I, I don't know how you cannot consider the context of whether commitments to the county, to other agencies, to neighbors and so forth have been met or haven't. And I think, for me, since that, this is already a tough call for a lot of other reasons, it, it leads me to feel that I am not confident that approving this project wouldn't be detrimental to public health, safety and welfare. I, I sympathize with the owner who I would like to take at his word is earnestly and genuinely trying to do the right thing. I take the point, Mr. Edgington, that this, this ordinance is intended to retroactively improve properties that have been neglected, and this one surely is. But I also feel that the history associated with this property makes me not inclined to trust that all the commitments that we're requiring could be met. I don't think I can support it. Okay, yeah, since we're at the time. I will therefore move that, well, Glenn will have all the language in front of me, but-
It, it's actually in the staff report, I think.
In the box. Yeah, I will move that we find the proposed project would be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare, and that the findings for approval of the proposed project cannot be made, find the project exempt from environmental review, pursue into section 15270 of SEQA, and deny the proposed conditional use permit.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second.
I'd like to call for the roll.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Any discussion about that?
Nobody asked for it, so.
Any more discussion on it?
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bongio?
Yes.
Commissioner Leve?
Yes.
Commissioner McGave?
No.
Appears the motion carries. With that, that was a long one. Thank you for all your participation. Director, we're not gonna have time to get into this, so do we need to? Please take it outside if you wanna do that. We still have business to finish.
We, we will bring that back on the meeting of 319. We were arguing on, on starting public hearings shortly thereafter, so-
Alright, that sounds good.
Can we maybe put it at the, the top of the agenda? Would that be possible?
That's entirely possible, yes.
I mean-
I would request that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sounds good. Any other questions for the director? Seeing none, we are adjourned.